All right, thank you very much. First of all, I'd like to consider any additions or deletions to the agenda?
Thank you, Madam Chair. We have one addition under the county attorney. It's a request to direct staff to initiate the process to change the land use category for a parcel ID that you see there before you from public facilities to rural residential.
Okay. Do we have a motion? And a second? We have a motion in second. All those in favor? Aye. Motion carries. At this time, we will have public comment on anything that is on the agenda. At this time, anything that is on the agenda. I will remind you that when we get to that item, you will also have an opportunity to speak then, so if you would like to wait until then to do so, particularly if you will with the customary use, if you're here to speak on that, if you will wait until we bring that matter up, that would probably be very helpful. But if there's anything on the agenda that you would like to speak to at this time, please come forward, state your name for the record, and also spell your last name. Yes, sir?
Good morning. John Boushy, B-O-U-S-H-Y. I stand here principally because I'm standing in for my wife Lisa, who's not here. She unfortunately had to go back for a service for a very close friend of hers. And what she wanted me to do, and she regrets not being able to be here, so she's probably watching, so I better follow her notes. She wanted me to reiterate her suggestion that she made at the public meeting last week related to the appointment of a committee that contains constructive constituents to help formulate the approach for beach usage. As we've all heard in the various public meetings and in various BCC meetings that have occurred on this topic, we've heard in every public meeting that we used to live in relative cooperation throughout the county. And unfortunately, over the course of the last several years, that's changed a bit. She believes that there's an opportunity to really avoid, you know, any kind of confrontation, whether it be emotional confrontation or whether it be litigation. And she wanted me to reiterate her willingness to be considered as someone who would be willing to serve on the committee. Not knowing whether you are going to actually consider the beach ordinance this morning, which is obviously on the agenda, she also wanted me to reiterate a couple of things that you may have seen in her email, if you had a chance to review her email that she sent you late yesterday afternoon. The reiterations would be that, number one, she really wonders whether changing the 25-foot buffer is in the best interest of the quality of the beach and the rebuilding of the beach. She's concerned that through vehicles and various activities on the beach, that getting closer and closer to, at the end of the day, the vegetation line could really impact things. And as we already know, you know, there's certainly a number of vehicles on the beach. She also suggested that you reconsider the change, or the change associated with umbrellas. She contacted several beach vendors yesterday and found that most umbrellas, if not all of them, are eight feet in diameter, not 10 feet in diameter. And if she recalls correctly, you know, in prior meetings, there've been some concerns about items being blown across the beach because of wind, and obviously, the bigger the umbrella, the more likely it is to be caught by the wind. And with that, I thank you for your attention.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else that would like to speak on something that is on the agenda at this time? Seeing none, we will move forward. Ladies and gentlemen, do you have any items that you want removed for the agenda for further consideration? Seeing none, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion. Go ahead. Second.
We have a motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Next, we have the Waste Management EAL.
Madam Chair, I have a conflict of interest. I filed a proper form with the clerk. I will abstain from the vote.
Thank you, sir. Do I have a motion to approve the EAL as presented?
Second.
I have a motion in the second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. All right, I am going to rewrite the agenda this morning for, so that we can get to the big elephant in the room and what some of you are here for, without you waiting through the entire meeting to do so. I'm going to move the public hearing up on customary use. It will come first on our agenda. Because we have had previous meetings on this subject, have been discussed in some way, shape, or form in February, March, May, April, June, and October, we're going to limit our discussion this morning to one hour. We are going to limit it to one hour. And I would ask, and I will need a vote to this effect, if someone wishes to make it. At last week's hearing on the customary use issue, we had 43 people that spoke. I'd ask if it'd be your pleasure that we enter their comments into this, into the record, so that these people have already spoken and we get a chance to hear from some others. There were 43 people that spoke last week, if you choose to do so.
Make a motion for that, to that effect.
Okay. Second.
We have a motion in second to enter. All those who spoke last week, and you know who you are, that, you know, we gave you an opportunity to do so. Is there any comment on that? Seeing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. We will move forward with the public hearing on customary use.
Motion, open, public hearing.
All right, we have a motion?
Second.
We have a motion in second. Open the public hearing. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, motion carries.
Madam Chairman, I believe Mr. Theriaque has just a couple of quick opening remarks, and then you can take more public comment.
Okay.
Good morning. My name is David Theriaque, T-H-E-R-I-A-Q-U-E. There were a couple of questions that were raised during the workshop that I wanted to respond to. One deals with, and I had it here, here we go, there was a question of liability. I'm going to make sure I got the mic right. We've taken a look at if customary use ordinance is adopted, what is the exposure to the private property owners? We believe that the folks that use the dry sand would be deemed to be an uninvited licensee. And under that standard, the landowner is required to refrain from wanton negligence or willful misconduct, which would injure the person, to refrain from intentionally exposing the person to danger, and to warn a person of a defect or condition known to the landowners to be dangerous when such danger is not open to ordinary observation by the licensee. Also, no duty is imposed by law on an owner or an occupant to keep his premises in a safe condition for those who come there solely for their own convenience or pleasure. So it's very limited exposure. It's basically what exists there today, is if somebody walked on the dry sand, whether they were invited or uninvited. Another topic that came up, we've heard several folks indicate that this would be a taking of their right to exclude, and I wanted to share with you, from the Oregon Supreme Court, they addressed that very issue. And what the Oregon Supreme Court held is when plaintiffs took title to their land, they were unnoticed that exclusive use of the dry sand areas was not part of the bundle of rights that they acquired, because public use of dry sand areas is so notorious that notice of the custom on the part of persons buying land along the shore must be presumed. So essentially, what the Oregon Supreme Court is holding is when folks bought their property, because customary use already existed, that they did not have in their bundle of sticks the stick called the right to exclude, because customary use preceded their ownership. Customary use established the public's right to use the dry sand. So when they purchased their property, they did not have the right to exclude the public from the dry sand. I wasn't sure if you were asking a question, Commissioner Meldius?
No.
Okay, thank you. But those were, I heard, those were the two key points that I heard raised during the workshop that I just wanted to address at the beginning. Thank you.
Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, you have any questions to Mr. Theriaque? Seeing none? All right. Mr. Davis, do you have any?
No, ma'am.
All right.
Could I make a comment?
Yes, please.
Before we start the public meetings and listen to you, I, you know, I'm really agreeing with Lisa Boushy and, or Boushy, and I really would like to see a committee formed, and this is not by any means to compromise our position. I just want to hear, you know, I would like to see a committee formed by the commission. I would like for you to, and this is my idea, so y'all can input, but maybe send in a letter, if you're willing to serve on a committee, have a couple of public meetings so that we can totally vet what everybody's saying, and we might come up with some revisions. If we pass this ordinance today, we might come up with some better ideas. My goal is to see this community get along and not be divided. With that said, understand, this is not a compromise. This is an attempt to try to get some better dialogue and some communication going. So with that said...
Well, I actually certainly agree with you. You beat me to the punch. I was going to, also, I did listen to Ms. Boushy the other day. I feel like, and I hope, that everybody in this community, and we are a community, can be reasonable, can work together. I feel like that, whether we pass it today or not, if we do pass it, then, for example, I'd like to extend the implement timeout and us do form a committee of folks, property owners, as well as those that, you know, believe in customary use, and have these people meet, perhaps three or four times, come back to us, let's say, in March, with some suggestions that hopefully that we all could live with. I think there's just a few on each side. I've heard so many of the beachfront owners say that they don't ever restrict anybody, but they don't like it whenever people throw trash, that they have to, or glass bottles, or make loud noises. I understand where they're coming from. I also understand where the people are coming from that say they've been chased off by a gun. So I believe that we hopefully could reach a compromise without spending vast amounts of money on both sides. So I agree with what you're saying, Commissioner, and we'll go ahead and take public comment, and then we'll go from there. So those of you who would like to comment on this issue, if you would raise your hand and come forward, come forward, ma'am. Say if you did speak at the last meeting, you do not have to, because we are going to incorporate everything you said into the record. Ma'am, if you will come forward, if you will state your last name for the record and spell it, so our clerk can get it clearly. Oh, I'm sorry. Okay. I have a list, but you go first. I'm sorry. I forgot my list. You go ahead.
I'm sorry. I was the only one raising my hand at first.
That's all right. Go ahead.
Okay. My last name is Hughes, H-U-G-E-S.
Will you pull the microphone? There you go. Thank you, dear.
Okay. And I actually just have a statement. The attorney just spoke about a case in Oregon, and I actually was reading, this is an excerpt from the Florida State Bar in 2009, and it says, "However, as suggested above, Florida's customary use doctrine differs from Oregon's. While Thornton opened all Oregon's beaches to the public, Tony Rama had only a limited effect in Florida because courts require that customary usage be shown for a particular beach. Documenting such use can be expensive or even impossible, and according to a 2002 legal opinion issued by the state Attorney General's Office," to be Florida, "the state, this dry sand beach is not subject to public use under customary right of use doctrine until that right has been established by a court. Thus, unless Florida courts are willing to broaden the impact of Tony Rama beyond the limitations defined in Reynolds, the customary use doctrine cannot preserve public access to dry sand beaches throughout the state." So, sounds a little bit contrary to what he said, so I just thought that that would be nice to be on the record, and I believe that that legal opinion was actually written in response to questions from Destin when they tried to pass this exact same ordinance that didn't end up working. So, just wanted to add my two cents in.
Thank you.
There about that, and put that on the record, and that also, when you look at the ordinance that was attempted to pass in Destin, it almost is verbatim what is trying to be passed here. And I'm wondering what has changed from 2002 to now to make it allowable? Thank you.
Thank you. First name on my list is Richard Breitman.
Good morning, Madam Chairman, Commissioners. I'm Richard Breitman, B-R-I-G-H-T-M-A-N. I'm a lawyer from Hopping Green in San Antonio, here today on behalf of more than 20 concerned and courageous Gulffront property owners. I did speak at both of the previous meetings, so I'll try not to repeat what I said. I, much like the previous speaker, first mentioned to the commission that customary use really is a judicial doctrine, and in Florida's history, has only been applied by courts, not by county commissions, and that's the appropriate way, in my opinion, for customary use to be dealt with in the state of Florida. So I just urge you to take that into consideration. I do want to mention one additional thing that I don't know if you've thought of, well, you probably have, because you're thoughtful people, but, and that is, what effect the customary use ordinance would have on your tax base? Now, it would affect some of the most valuable properties in Walton County, and your ad for loan taxes are based on property values. Now, customary use may not affect title, but it will surely affect value. And at least over time, I don't know how quickly it would happen, over time, if customary use is imposed on these valuable properties, the value of those properties will go down, and your tax base will go down as a consequence. And so I just offer that for your consideration. And for all of those reasons, I just urge you not to proceed with this ordinance today. Thanks very much.
Thank you, sir. Is it Richard Buttella? You just spoke. Mr.?
No. Richard Buttella, B-U-T-E-L-A. First, I want to thank the BCC for enlisting such a knowledgeable and competent attorney, and I want to thank the attorney for doing such an impressive and thorough job of researching this. And to address the last gentleman's statement, I think property values would be more severely impacted if we don't have customary use. Most of people using the beach do not live on the beach. My wife and I actually went and researched several years ago, all the local newspapers to early, from the early 1900s. We were hearing this building going through all the papers, Ellsworth Library, it was an interesting field trip, and we found it's, and since we only, we're newbies here, we've only been here since, for 20 years, we found that it's well documented, and it's been used for many different activities, some of which, you know, many of us wouldn't be too fond of having right now, but people used to ride their horses, drive their cars, camp, public gatherings, picnics, sunbathing. And since my wife and I moved here, we've continued by doing such mundane things as just chilling out at the beach under an umbrella. Thank you.
Thank you. Linda Cook?
I'm going to pass, so I think the decision's already been made.
Alice Buttella?
I'll pass.
Okay. Max Watson? And next will be Nora Miller, I mean, excuse me, Nora Murphy, if you want to kind of get ready to step up.
Max Watson, W-A-T-S-O-N. I just had to understand, I was at the workshop, but I was told at this meeting we could ask questions, and I have some clarification, I'd like some clarifications on the ordinance. On page two, it talks about individuals, groups, whatever, shall not interfere with the public's ability to continue the longstanding customary use of the white sand beach. Does that include access points to the beach, or is it just basically north and south, I'm sorry, east and west, or does that include north-south access points and the cannot interfere?
Well, all of the access points are either owned by or have been dedicated to the county already, so there would be no...
So this doesn't affect private access points?
No, sir.
Okay, that's good. And the other one was, on the first paragraph, it talks about existing or future access points, so those are just county access points, I presume, but you might want to clarify that in the ordinance, because it's not clear, and at some time in the future, some other group of council members might decide that they want to think about private access points. I would appreciate if that would be clarified in the ordinance, because it's definitely not clear. Thank you.
Next, Nora Murphy?
I want to thank the commission for the good work you've done, and I know this is not an easy decision, but I do feel that it's one that's very simple, as we're doing what's right, and we are not to the point of this ordinance by any means. The gentleman before me had clarified some points. One of my main concerns was it just says utilizing existing or future beach accesses, points for ingress and outgress, which will confuse the public that they're entitled to use private boardwalks. I am a community association manager, and I manage three Gulffront properties. On our Gulffront properties, these were deeded as common elements, a portion of this white sand. This was public records recorded. Every purchaser of the condo by state law got a copy of the documents that also show small plat map that shows these common elements, and again, state that it's for the exclusive right of the unit owners. We do not claim we own the whole beach, and I've been here for 25 years. The public tends to go want to be down at the water's edge. A 15-foot buffer is not near enough to maintain what the owners of these condominiums would require if all of a sudden, the public portion of the beach is full of Publix volleyball nets, everything that we all like to have fun to do. Where are the owners and the renters and the guests of these condos supposed to sit? They purchased these units at a higher price, and part of that purchase price in their mind was because they owned a little portion, so they knew they would always have an area to go down and sit on. And by opening up the whole entire dry sand to the public, we cannot guarantee that. Again, the 15-foot buffer is such a small buffer that there's no feasible way that this would be able to sit all my owners, and I only manage small ones, the largest one being 48 units. So I really want people to think I like the idea of a committee. I just don't think this is what we need to do. I don't think that, you know, according to Florida law, I mean, I'm not an attorney, but the common elements, generally, the use and the change of common areas can only be done by a membership of the owners, which in this case would be the property owners. And as far as liability insurance, again, I'm not an insurance agent, but I know that we have to purchase insurance on all of our common areas to include general liability. I hate to see us just get into legal battles, and I do hope that we can work as a community, and I would encourage the commissioners to purchase more Gulffront land to be able to also fit the needs of the upcoming future with the increase in public. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. All right. Mr. Boushy, we've heard, are you coming back up?
Sorry.
This is probably for you this time.
John Boushy, B-O-U-S-H-Y. It is for me this time. So first of all, I want to personally suggest that I support the ideas of Commissioner Commander and Jones, and perhaps other commissioners, about a committee. I think working together, we can solve just about any problem. Should the committee, though, continue to consider the customary use ordinance? You know, I have several comments as a result of Wednesday's public session, and I think y'all remember how much I like to research, research through the Walton Beach Nourishment Project. There are significant gaps in the, in Dr. Miller's presentation in both geography and chronology. I would have to tell you that while I thought it was an excellent presentation, it reminded me of an Oliver Stone movie. It had enough facts in it to cause anyone to conclude that you could easily pass customary use, despite the fact that they were pieced together across time and across geography. Let me give you just one example. I was enthralled with the concept of a sieve of people accessing the beach, and the area that he showed on page 30 of his presentation was about Lake Stewart. Turns out that Lake Stewart, and it was a picture from 1974. For those of you familiar with the county, Lake Stewart now has Seaside developed all around it. The beach is private, the gate accesses are there only for the people who are across the street. And I find it interesting that when he summarized his findings, that he said uninterrupted access is an important component of customary use. So I began to scratch my head, kind of wondering, how could it be that with Seaside, and with him using that as an example of constant access to the beach, it seemed like a contradiction to me? I think, by the way, if I recall correctly, Seaside was actually developed in the mid-'70s. So it has been interrupting use for a tremendous amount of time, and I just give you that as one example. I think the other thing I'd want to describe is, well, I think the last thought is, thankfully, Florida is not Oregon. So, thank you.
Thank you. Robert Shelton?
My name is Robert Shelton. That's S-H-E-L-T-O-N. I represent Surfside, which is directly beside Seaside, and I totally agree with him. And that photograph that was utilized by Mr. Miller showed Seaside in its current form with golf courses, which means the photograph he was using was showing private property. My question is, he did do a good job, I believe, of establishing the public's right to private property. I'd like to see when the next ordinance will be installed that would give the public rights to all private property in South Walton County, and that would include Sandestine, Emerald Bay, Mac Bayou, and all the south shore of Choctawachi Bay from the west end of the county to the east end... county to the east end. I believe Mr. Miller did just as good a job, if not better, of establishing the public's rights to these areas than he did the beach, with his archaeological sites and all his reference points. My next question is, when the next ordinance will be drafted to show the public's right to the north shore of Choctawachi Bay and all the properties there, I think you can utilize the same 15-foot buffer zone. I'd like to know when myself, my daughter, my granddaughter can have a picnic on the 15th hole at Sandeston, since there is no 15-foot structure within that area, and I have in the past, when I was a younger man, used that area. So my question is, how can you selectively enforce public use of private property just on certain private property owners in Walton County without enforcing it on all private property owners in Walton County? Thank you.
Next, Frank Day.
Frank.
You signed up. You want to pass?
Well, I will take my opportunity. But customary use goes back as long of use of the waterways in the country, in the world, actually, as long as we've existed. I mean, that's where we've, in the early years of our existence, acquired our sustenance, for the most part. To attempt to cut a point in time and say, let's change that and move it to this area, I think is maybe elitist. I just can't, I just can't see the few being represented in this to the disadvantage of the many, and I do support customary use. Thank you.
And I have a real affinity for somebody with a broken arm. I see the gentleman standing in the back. There's an open chair up front, sir, if you, you okay? All right.
Good morning, Commissioners. I'll just take a brief moment, too. I spoke last time, but I failed to talk how much I appreciated the history presentation, because history is very important to Walton County. Our first border back in 1824 was very broad and included both what we know now is north and south Walton, but the very next year, 1825, South Walton left to be part of Washington County until 1913 and didn't come back until that time. So it's kind of good to know how those borders shifting, but on a personal note, I knew Bob Swinford, Dr. Robert Bob Swinford, he was the husband of Mickey Wesley Swinford, and it was her parents, William and Katie Wesley, who built the Wesley House in Eden State Gardens, and they homesteaded or had a land grant in 1903 of 160 acres on Eastern Lake. And talked to Bob about the use of the public, and you can go back and look in Old Point, Washington, which is one of the oldest and most historical communities in Walton County, about the use of those people freely of the beach area. Also, L.I. Smith, who had a home here on the Circle, but also came showing the north and south Walton has gotten together. We do have a history together, 1885, with the Chautauqua people came down and on the train here, and that's what brought L.I. Smith down and had property in Greaton Beach early. He also had in Camp Walton, he actually owned the Gulfview Hotel before he sold it to the Staffs and Gerlocks, and how they're going across to the beach area there and using it, but also using it what is now the current borders of Walton County. And then just ending with, I talked a little bit again about the Coffee versus Groover case of 1888. It's the U.S. Supreme Court, I think it's 1231, 1888. But again, Justice Bradley went back and said, we must go back and look at the history because it does affect us. It does affect how we act today. So I just wanted, I had failed to mention the importance of history, and also, we have our Florida territorial papers. There was some comment about primary source documentation. There's a plethora started when we became, Florida became a territory in 1821, and certainly when Walton County became a county in 1824, one of the oldest counties in the country, fast approaching our 200th birthday. There's a lot of information in those documents. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Reese. That is the end of the list that I have, people that had signed up to speak. Is there anyone else that is here? There again, keep in mind, if you spoke the last time, we do have everything you had to say on the public record, but you're welcome to speak again if you will come forward, sir. And then Ms. Hilton, you will be next. By the way, there's a chair up front if you'd like it. State your name again for the record and spell your last name.
Good morning. It's nice to see you all again. My name is Jack Hanes, H A N E S. I am the president of the Homeowners Association at Sanctuary by the Sea Condominiums at Blue Mountain Beach. I'm very much heartened to hear some commission members talking about forming a committee, trying to discuss this, find some solutions that can be compromised. I applaud that 100%. I would carry that further and ask you, if indeed that's what you want to do, please do not pass this ordinance this morning. It simply poisons the potential for compromise. It causes people to become defensive immediately. I can tell you, if you pass it this morning, this afternoon, I will be on the phone with our attorney. I don't want to have to spend thousands of dollars in attorney's fees, I'm sure you don't either, if we don't have to. So over a period of a few months of discussion and working through committees, we might find a compromise that saves all of us thousands, potentially millions of dollars. Please do not pass this this morning. Give committee and compromise a chance to work. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, anyone?
Good morning. I am also, this, my name is Julie Hilton, and we own property, my family and I own property in Walton County on the beach.
And it's H I L T O N?
H I L T O N, yes, ma'am. And I am also heartened by the idea of us coming together and trying to be reasonable and looking at this more objectively than has been done. I don't know whether you realize it or not, but this ordinance actually takes more rights from us beachfront property owners than if you had a beach nourishment project going on and the state on the property south of the ECL line. Even the state, under beach nourishment, doesn't take your private property. They take property that accretes, that they have caused to accrete. And even under those circumstances, the statute provides that upland owners have control of their, the property south of them to the, to the water, and they have repairing rights. And this goes much further than that. Also, you're proposing in this ordinance something to give more rights to people to use the beach than they even have at public parks. And I just really think that there has to be a better answer to concerns of people than what we have come up with today. There's many things that I could say about it, but what this gentleman just mentioned before is, we're being forced to do, end up in lawsuits that are going to cost needless money to everyone. My dad had a saying, when he felt that someone was unjustly taking property from us or things from us, he used to say, "Gird up your loins and get your best hold, because the road will be long and toilsome." And I assure you that there are a lot of property owners who feel that this is so unjust that you are forcing us to end up in these needless lawsuits. So I would strongly recommend that we do what we can to try to resolve this without resorting to the courts. Thank you very kindly.
Sir, anyone else? Yes, sir. Be careful on that coword issue.
Did I say the county if I tripped?
I think it's the girl with the camera.
Good morning. My name is Bruce Anderson, A N D E R S O N. Bruce P. Anderson Law Destin. I'm a local attorney. I've appeared before you in the customary use workshops, hearings, assigned ordinance, and I'm not going to repeat what I've said at the prior commission meeting. I want to talk about something new. Ms. Hilton talked about a saying her father had, well, my father had a saying, too, and that is, he's tired of two-handed lawyers. A lawyer that's going to say, well, on one hand, the law, the facts say this, and on the other hand, the law, the facts say this. He said, "I only want a one-handed lawyer." Well, I'm a one-handed lawyer today, and I'm going to tell you what the facts are. I'm also attorney for Sandeston, and the gentleman that just spoke about the potential customary use on the 15th hole would be certainly opposed by Sandeston, Mr. Becknell, as you understand, but it might help my golf game if I could get around the 15th hole because people were picnicking on it. But in any event, I'm going to back up what Mr. Brightman has said, and that is, have you requested from your property appraiser the impact on the tax assessments based upon the impact of this ordinance on their property? Mr. Theriaak says it's no taking. He's referring it to the ordinance or the case law in Oregon. As one gentleman said, this is not Oregon, and thank goodness it's not. It's not California that's passed an ordinance that deals with customary use. It is interesting that Mr. Theriaak and others providing this information to you have had to go to Oregon, California, and elsewhere to provide or find some basis for supporting this statute. There is no support in Florida law. There's a couple of cases that have dealt with it, and the facts in those cases are particularly important to that, and will not stand muster here. This is a matter that, and have you asked yourselves, why you're the only county in Florida that has taken this issue up? Why have not all the other counties that have beachfront property taken it up? Well, because I'm certain they've considered it, and they've obviously concluded that an ordinance is not the way to go, the courts are the way to go, the law is clear that the courts are the way to go, and that's where it'll end up if you file and pass this The tax base will go down, but in addition, you're going to subject yourself to liability for attorney's fees in a taking case under a Florida act that allows landowners to sue for impact on their property, not necessarily taking of the property, but the impact on the value of the property. You will subject yourself to liability under that for the value of the property that has been impacted, so you're going to be hit twofold. You're going to pay those damages, you're going to pay fees, and you're also going to be reducing your tax base. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Anderson. Is there someone else?
Good morning, Commissioners and staff. My name is Beth Clay, C L A Y. And I didn't come prepared to speak today, but just listening to the testimony, I felt that I should. My husband and I purchased beachfront property in 2002 in Walton County. We have continuously seen the respect for private property rights erode in that length of time. We live less than four tenths of a mile from a regional public beach, and yet people come and cross our property as the quickest way to get to the beach. We've never tried to keep people from using the beach, but it's pretty alarming to be sitting on your back porch and someone just come up on your deck and head to the beach, just because it's the quickest way for them to get there when there's public beach access there. So as you consider this option, I just ask that you try to make some type of firm statement as that you still respect and want the private property rights respected by all. And I like the idea that you've talked about a committee. I feel like that reasonable minds can meet on this. I could tell you lots of horror stories about what we've been done by beachgoers, when you've, I know you've heard all of the ones about property right owners trying to keep the beachgoers from being happy, but it works both ways. And I feel like that if we had a committee made up of people, we could come to a reasonable conclusion. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Thompson. Is there anyone else that would like to speak at this time? All right, seeing none, Commissioners? I'll start out with looking at the ordinance. It does say, establish a 15-foot buffer from the, like, the toe of the dunes. What if we established a buffer starting at the mean high water line going, going this way rather than that way? Because most people are trying to get, you know, they want to get as close to the waters, so what if we made it at the waters rather than at the toe of the dunes or whatever? That would give the same amount of distance for beachgoers, but it might give the property owners a little more buffer. Someone suggested that to me, I'm passing it on.
I have a question. You know, we hired Rick Hall to give us a report on the quiet titles and quick claims and such. From what I've seen, a lot of these properties were quiet titled and quick claimed over the course of decades. And I think that's an important thing to remember, is that I always wanted to know, how did some of these properties become private? And I don't, I don't have those answers yet. I would like, is Rick Hall going to come give us that presentation?
Yes, ma'am. We anticipated him being at the last meeting, but he's very sick. He couldn't be here today, so we're working to schedule him for the November the 7th meeting, I believe.
Okay, okay. Because I think that that has some bearing on, on all of this, and that's why I think we hired him, and we also hired Mr. Theriaak under the auspices of writing this ordinance, and it was pushed to get it to this date in a rush. And so I'm quite confused as to why two Commissioners now are kind of going, well, maybe we need to have a committee. And so I'm just, I'm really kind of confused about that. And also, too, one of the things that Florida, if you go to Palm Beach or Miami, you can't see the water, you can't see the ocean, you can't get to the water, you can't get to the ocean. I think if we don't pass something, you can kiss the tourism business goodbye. You can, you can add up all the drops in values of all the homes and rental properties north of the beach, and that number will be a huge number as well. Because what is happening and what will happen, what will happen is, we're seeing people come in, and we've just seen it on Montgomery Street, as people claimed the breezeways by quiet title, took those as their property now. And so this is just the tip of the iceberg. You're going to see everything shut, it will be shut off, and the people north of 98 in Freeport, in Dufuniac, in Paxton, and there will be no place to go to the beach. And I can attest to that because I watched Palm Beach, I watched Miami Beach, I watched a lot of these exclusive beaches be shut down slowly but surely, one by one, as we're seeing by some of these quiet titles. And so that would be my input into this, is that why did we come this far if now we're going to back off?
I think I'm hearing, or maybe I'm misunderstanding you, are you wanting to hear from Mr. Hall before we make a decision?
No, I just, I think, I think that, you know, November 7th will be, will be my last meeting. So I think this is going to be y'all's, y'all's deal. I'm just putting my two cents in right now because I'm just, these are observations that I'm making. I think that it's going to be good to hear his, his, his input, but I don't, I don't think that has any bearing on whether we act today or not. I'm just saying that I think his input will be very important as well, and that we should get him to provide us with that input and not just kind of, you know, well, we don't need to hear from him, which is kind of the impression I got, but maybe that's wrong.
Madam Chair?
Yes, sir.
Excuse me. It was mentioned a couple of times, and I'm going to ask counsel, how do you get the courts to decide this issue without passing an ordinance?
Well, two or three things. To answer that question directly, we would have to, if we wanted to establish customary use throughout the 26 miles of beach excluding, obviously, the public land, we would have to file a suit and serve and sue all 900,000-plus beachfront property owners. That would...
You mean 900?
900, yes, ma'am.
Thousand.
No, no, no.
I'm sorry, I thought you said 900,000.
No, ma'am. 900 to 1,000 beachfront property owners, and then have one lawsuit with all those folks as defendants. That would be the only way I'm aware of we could do it.
Okay. The committee, it's been discussed. I'd like to get some... I'd like to get some take from the rest of the Commissioners of the size of the committee, the makeup of the committee, and how would it be managed? Because if you get a, if you get a committee that's extremely large number, you're not going to get anything done.
Right.
You've got to have it manageable, and the people should be represent respective areas where it's condo owners or resorts or government or whatever. But to just create a committee, there's got to be give and take. I kept hearing that, let's some give and take from the government, and there's some give and take from the landowners. But if we have certain landowners that doesn't care one way or the other, what a committee may come out with, we're probably going to be here another six months from now. So, excuse me. Well, that's true, too. But anyway, I just, I've heard the committee brought up, but I haven't heard how it's going to be made up, how, what's your, whether it's going to be tasks to do. And I need to know some of that before I move forward on that.
And will there be recommendations made? Because even if there's recommendations made, and you adopt some of those recommendations and not others, there will be still people out there who will sue the county. I mean, it doesn't matter, I think, what you adopt, that if the committee gets together, you're going to have outliers who are not going to be involved in the committee, and they're going to, and no matter what you do, there's, you know, there's going to be people that are not going to be happy with what you do.
The other question I have, I noticed that we changed from 25 feet to 15 feet. I mean, where did that number come from?
We listened during the workshop to some concerns about 25 feet, and actually had code enforcement on the beach measure some areas. Quite frankly, given the size of the erosion that has taken place, especially on the eastern end of the beach, there's not 25 feet of beach from the, from the dune line. So, we backed it up to, the idea was to back it up so we would have some area of the beach that would be available to the public, yes.
Well, I've also kind of, well, I do agree with some issues that were brought up as far as designating or clarifying county access points instead of...
Yeah, I, just listening, and, you know, again, this is why we have comments. Frankly, we've read this thing a thousand times, and the gentleman was correct. If you look at paragraph three, if you look at the second from last line where it says, except as is necessary to utilize an existing or future, I would just insert the word public beach access, and I think that clarifies that completely. And I appreciate the suggestion.
Okay.
Madam Chair, I've got a question for Mr. Davis.
Yes, sir.
It was brought up about the city of Destin having gone through a similar situation, yet it got resolved. How did they resolve their issues?
Dave was more involved than I was, but I understood it was resolved because there was beach renourishment and an erosion control line was established. That was my understanding.
Mr., may I ask, Mr. Theriault, is that accurate?
I know he was involved.
Are you aware?
I believe initially it was resolved by the sheriff's office indicating that they would not arrest anybody who was within 20 feet of the debris line. I had drafted a ordinance that was a template that we used for this. This is not identical to what we did in the city of Destin. And the city council was considering whether to adopt the ordinance when the sheriff made that proposal, and at that time, it satisfied both the property owners and the beachgoers. So, the city did not adopt the ordinance when I was the city land use attorney. I'm not sure what took place after I left.
Hey, forgive me. What's a debris line?
In Destin, the concept was where the water is coming in and out, that it leaves kind of a vegetation and debris varies based upon tides. And they were trying to use that as a basis to say, 20 feet from the debris line, we won't arrest you. The other concept, which Commissioner Chapman, I think, raised, or maybe it was Commissioner Commander, about using the mean high water line, the difficulty with that is nobody knows where that line is while they're on the beach, because that was actually my first cut, was saying, let me take so many feet from the mean high water line. But that's just a line that's an average of 18.6 years that nobody knows while you're standing on the beach where that line is. So, that's why we went from the toe of the dune or a permanent structure where there's no dune.
Okay, so we would also have a debris line in Walton County?
I don't know. I've never been on your beaches with a beach towel, and so I don't know what you have on your beach.
Well, there's, you know, there's a debris line, but it, if there's a storm and it blows a lot of things in, then there's a debris line. But if it's calm and, you know, there really isn't anything. So, it varies there, you know, the debris will, you know, and you can tell it's a long string of seaweed or shells or something, but only after, from what I've observed, rough weather.
Thank you. You're welcome.
No, sir, I'm sorry.
... directly with the question of how customary use ordinance could be considered if not with the ordinance passed.
Mr. Davis?
I think you've already taken his comments.
We've already, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Mr. Davis has... Commissioner Commander, do you want to hear from him?
I would like to hear from Ms. Anderson if you don't mind.
All right, all right, I'm sorry, sir.
Ms. Anderson, would you please?
Yeah. The Commissioners want to hear from you, so.
Okay. The previously obtained advice of counsel that it was going to take a lot-by-lot determination of whether there was a right customary use, and that there would have to be an establishment of use over a period of time which was a customary use for each individual lot to establish it. Now, you've got away from that opinion of your attorneys and have now gone into this ordinance and have some idea that...
Wait a minute, wait a minute. I'm not going to let him just represent my advice to this council, this commission. I have never, one time, said to this commission, we would have to prove customary use lot by lot, nor has Mr. Theriault.
We're not talking about you. We're talking about Mr. Theriault, who you hired. And Mr. Theriault had given an opinion that takes a lot-by-lot determination.
No, sir, he has not done that.
How is a declaratory judgment action of this ordinance without suing the individual owners going to be enforceable against individual landowners that's not...
Thank you, Mr. Anderson.
Mr. Anderson, well, it is well within our police power, in my humble opinion.
Getting back on topic, in talking about the committee, I would suggest a committee of eight to 10. This would be chosen by anybody that would like to sit on the committee. If you would, this is my ideas, submit a letter to legal, to Sidney, then we would choose, try to, and I don't know who would choose, so we'll have to get there.
The Commission would have to choose.
The Commission would have to choose, like, and try to, you know, make sure that the committee represents a vast majority of different views and common, you know, common sense. And then have two public workshops, one in January, one in February, and then let that committee take March to try to come up with some ideas, some, you know, recommendations. Not that I'm trying to avoid lawsuits, I'm just really seeking to have some communication, some improvement of our decisions. So, then, you know, I guess we need to decide today if we're going to pass the ordinance, and then if we do, then we would be subject to changing or modifying, you know, any such form. So, that was my idea for a committee, that's what I was thinking.
I think, Mark, if you will correct me if I'm wrong, if we go ahead and pass the ordinance, we can make it not applicable or start until, say, April of next year?
You have a couple of choices, Commissioner. The first would be you could move the effective date to whatever day you choose, March 31st, or you could pass it and then by separate motion state that the ordinance would not be enforced or made part of, would not be enforced essentially until that same date. Those are the two choices you'd have. I don't know, I have a preference. I don't know if Dave has a preference either way, but those are the two choices you would have.
Well, and I don't think anybody up here is trying to, as you say, pass, you know, and not make a decision.
Let me say one other thing, Commissioners, just by way of advice. If you do choose to appoint a committee, because you've appointed that committee and that committee is going to make recommendations to the Commission, all the meetings of the committee will have to be advertised. There'll have to be minutes taken, and it'll be subject to the sunshine law, and all the members of the committee, just so if people want to apply, they need to know this ahead of time, all the members of the committee would be subject to the public records law as well. So, they, they need to know that their emails, their communications would be subject to the public records law.
It would be in our world, so to speak. And I, you know, I hear both sides. I was born and raised in Ocala. I walked Daytona for years, when my mother would let me. I have since moved up here, have walked to that beach for years. I very much feel like that I have a right to do that. I feel like, you know, that there is a issue on private property rights. I understand, I have a friend that owns a beach house, and she's like Ms. Clay. She'll be sitting on her property, and somebody will just walk up on her deck. You know, we have to find common ground here, I hope, so that we can all live with this before, I'd like to try everything in our power before actually spending 40 or 50 million dollars of taxpayer money. But if we have to, we have to. But I'm one for giving it perhaps one more chance if we can. But that's, that is up to the other members of this commission for y'all to decide. Do you have any more comments?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
I've got no problem with having a committee, providing that we get something accomplished. Now, I don't want this committee, if it's so formed, to just keep going on and on, and nobody comes to any type of resolution or recommendation for us to consider. And I'm kind of torn as to whether or not we go with just the committee or go ahead and pass this thing with an abatement until a future date, but that'd be the end of it. At the end of that, if it's April or March, whenever it may be, that's the end of it. We're going to do something one way or the other.
I tend to agree with you, sir. Ms. Meadows?
My understanding is that the sheriff is not enforcing trespass as we speak.
Yes, ma'am. His communication to us was as long as we were undertaking some action or moving toward an ordinance, he would not move that way.
So, it really wouldn't matter when it took effect because he's not enforcing it while this is ongoing. So, you know, you're just prolonging a, I think you're just prolonging the pain, but, you know, that's my opinion.
Well, if he takes that stance, wouldn't he, and he's not here to speak for himself, wait until the court, you know, and I don't know.
That's not what he's, that's not what's happened.
I hate to speak for him, but my understanding was as long as we're moving forward with action, there would not be trespass prosecutions.
That's right, just a trespass. Anything else? Unreally parties, whatever it may be that's a violation of state law and/or our beach activities ordinance, he can still take action on that and will. It's just a trespassing issue right now. So, if there's issues like that taking place on your property, you need to be calling the sheriff's office. You know, don't be calling us because we don't have any enforcement ability as far as arrest. You've got to call somebody that does have that arrest capability, and that is the sheriff.
Yeah, and I think, you know, during the campaign, this was a huge issue, and I have promised the people of Walton County, all 62,000 of them, that I would fight for their right to access and use in some way, shape, and form the white sandy beaches. So, I'm going to stick with my, I'm going to stick with my promises and on that because I think that the only way to get to the table is to do something like this. And what we've seen now is people who, who were, who were removing people from their property and proclaiming that nobody had the right to be on their property, we're now seeing them come to the table. And so, I think that by adopting this, it will get people to the table. If you want to put the effective date out there or whatever, it'll get people to the table, which is, I think, what, what we would like to happen. And so, you know, I'm going to stick with my promise to the voters of Walton County and make a motion that we would adopt the customary use ordinance as written, and if you want to form committees and such, that will be up to you guys because, of course, you know, I won't be on the commission. So, that would be my motion.
Can I make one suggestion? As written, but add the word "future" in paragraph three after the term. Future public beach access.
Public beach. And are you going to stick with 15 feet instead of...
The ordinance as written.
All right, so with the addition of the, in paragraph three, future public beach access. All right, that is your motion. Do I have a second? Well, we've got to go out of public hearing to do that, right?
I don't think it's necessary.
Because we're not dealing with money.
Yes, that'd be probably a better procedure.
Yes, do I have a motion to go out of public hearing?
Second.
We have a motion, a second, to go out of public hearing? All those in favor?
Aye.
Now then, Commissioner...
I will, I make, I make the motion that we adopt the ordinance with the changes recommended today, and then you can move forward with the committee or however you want to deal with it, but that we go ahead and adopt this so that, so that we have something in the record that we're, that we're working toward resolving.
All right, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Could she add to that April, effective April the 1st? And I will second it. Yeah, sure, April 1st, April Fool's Day, that would be a good day. Yeah, April 1st.
Or March 31st. Second.
And just, I'm sorry, guys, I don't mean to jump in, but just for clarification purposes, so we're going to insert the word "public" as stated, and we're going to make the effective date April 1, 2017, as to the currently proposed ordinance.
All right.
I've got a question for Mr. Davis.
Yes, sir.
I know that we've got change from 25 feet to 15 feet, and you mentioned there was critical erosion in some part. How extensive is that?
I don't remember the numbers. Sid may remember the numbers better than I do, but there are places where it's simply not 25 feet.
I can tell you at Seagrove Beach, down in that area near the V restaurant, there might be 20 feet of beach left.
But from a county standpoint, we're looking at the 26 miles.
Right.
So, how much of that 26 miles is impacted in that fashion?
Commissioner Enfield, actually, Brian Kellenberger with TDC Code Enforcement could probably answer it better than I could, but I asked him to go out and measure the areas that were critically eroded. As Mark said, it's mostly the eastern end of the beach from Inlet Beach to Seacrest is the area that's most eroded. And there are sections of the beach where there is less than 25 feet of sandy beach.
I hate to use generalities.
Well, this, this actually, after the committee looks at these things, there could be a recommendation to deal with. I would assume that if it's that eroded, then we don't really need anyone on it. So, that could be very specific coming forth.
Yes, ma'am, there are, Inlet Beach, and I'm using it because I actually had, was down there not very long ago, it's remarkable how little beach is left in some places.
Wow, okay. All right, we do have a motion and a second on the floor. Any further discussion among the board? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it passes. Next, well, do you want to make a motion, Commissioner?
Yes, yes, I'd like to make a motion that we form a committee of between eight and 10 constituents, and there's two public workshops held, one in January, one in February, and in March, they meet as a committee and formulate suggestions, ideas that could be considered by the Commission, and if needed, changes in the ordinance can be applied.
Okay, but that would have to be by the 1st of March because we would have to make our decision in order to go forward on the April 1st day.
Absolutely.
So, we could theoretically, you know, have two public meetings in January, develop, you know, have one in February, and then bring us their options in March. We don't need to do anything in December because people aren't going to meet anyway. But I would suggest 10 members of the committee, we could have, you know, representatives from across the board, people apply, and then, and we make selections from those at our first meeting, perhaps in December.
Can I suggest that if you're inclined to do this, that you have those applications to, it'd be easier to do it with DeeDee, actually, and then we have a deadline of, and I hate to put us on such a short deadline, but we have a meeting in, it's our first meeting in November, November...
7.
7. That we have those applications in by November 7, so we can, we can go ahead and get that as a committee appointment.
Can I suggest, too, that they, that, you know, maybe they fill out the volunteer thing?
That would be a great idea.
That would be the application, and then maybe they could comment as to their interest in what...
The app will be online, is that correct? DeeDee, it is online now.
How do we make sure that we've got not only both views, but alternate views presented in this thing?
I think that would be the job of DeeDee, and then we'll make, DeeDee, Mr. Jones and myself, we would make a recommendation to you once we get all the applications.
Very good.
So, and we'll obviously try to have as balanced a committee as possible.
Okay. Is that your motion, Commissioner Jones? Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion among the board? Seeing one in the audience? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, passes. We will take a 10-minute break to give those of you who do not want to stay with us, but it gets riveting after this. You can stay with us, but we'll give you a chance to vacate if you'd like. All right, we will come back to order now, please. And we will continue with our regular agenda item. We'll start with Mr. Jones.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The first item under admin is, we have with us today, I believe, Mr. Walter Bowers, representing the Florida Forest Service, with a presentation of their oh fifteen sixteen report containing a renewed operating plan, fire control report, and forest management summary. I believe those documents have been provided to you. And Mr. Bowers is here, if you have any questions or any comments he may have.
Okay, and we'd ask that the people in the hall, please take your conversation further down the hall.
Good morning. I'd like to start off by introducing Mr. Thomas Moss. He is the new Walton County Forester. He's come on with us a couple of months ago, helped draft the Walton County Management Report for the Forest Service. Thomas has got a lot of experience with the private sector, working in Alabama, and we're glad to have him on board. And y'all feel free to come by and talk to him anytime. His office is up here in Nefeniac Springs, just on the east side of town, on ninety.
And Mr. Bowers, I know it's on your shirt, but would you spell your name for the record, please?
B-O-W-E-R-S.
Thank you.
Commissioners, I know they have provided y'all a copy electronically of our, the county operating plan, the county fire control report, and also the county management plan for the Forest Service. At this time, if y'all have any questions, feel free to ask. Our fires in the local area this past year have been down due to the significant rainfall we have been receiving the last four to five years now. The last two months, things have changed and they've changed fast. I really expect, if things continue down this pattern, for us to have a very active year. County burning, as far as authorizations and permits for yesterday and today have been shut down. That's the first time that's happened, to my knowledge, in the last five years. So, we are at a threshold to where if we do not get critical rainfall in the next two to three weeks, we could possibly be entering into a significant fire situation. And if anyone has any questions about that, by all means, please feel free to ask me. We, county operating plan, work with Chief Martin on that. Same operating plan we've had, we've always had a good working relationship with Walton County Fire Rescue and all the actual emergency agencies in Walton County, and I want to appreciate their hard work and helping us out. And if y'all ever need us, we're only a phone call away. So, y'all have any questions for us per se?
No, I do have an observation, it's interesting. For the past few years, you're right, we've had such wet weather that three thirty-one, we thought was never gonna get done. Now that we've had some dry weather and they're making progress on three thirty-one, we have a fire. So, I guess with every good side, there's a bad side.
Yep, wet, dry repays the rain. But like I said, we're only a phone call away. Y'all feel free, I know it's quite an extensive report, but if y'all find anything in it that you don't have an opportunity to ask me today, y'all have my phone number, please call me, I'll be glad to come meet with any one of y'all and discuss anything at any time.
Very good, thank you. And Mr. Moss, welcome. We thank you, do you have anything you want to say? No, all right, thank you very much.
Y'all have a great day.
All right, could I have a motion, please, to accept the report as presented?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, is there any discussion? Is there any discussion in the audience? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
That's it, Dan. Why don't you got your hat?
Mr. Jones?
Thank you.
You indicated you wanted to vote, so.
Thank you, Madam Chair and Commissioners. The next item is a request from the Children's Volunteer Health Network to close both lanes of County Highway thirty-eight from Western Lake to Wilderness Way for the Children's Volunteer Health Network's Mile Mile and Five K charity fundraiser on May twenty, two thousand seventeen. This has been vetted by the Sheriff's Office, the Fire District, and Public Works, and I'll recommend approval.
Does anyone here like to speak on this topic? Okay, first of all, we need a motion and a second.
I have a quick question. It says on here from Western Lake. Now, where on Western Lake? Where on Western Lake? Like, Western Lake has an east end and a west end, and is it gonna be closed from, oh, the part in Watercolor? The road in Watercolor? What is that road? What is that road in Watercolor that you're gonna come out on?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
My name is Mike Gavigan, G-A-V-I-G-A-N. I sit on the Board of Directors for CVHN, the charity we're talking about. And this is Zach Billingsley, he's our executive director. And this is Amy Jones, our development director. Thank you for having us. The road you're asking about is actually Mystic Cobalt.
Okay.
Right there at the public access parking lot in between Seaside and Watercolor.
Okay.
I've talked to Sheriff's Office with Scott Hoagboom. We've decided, where we've, he's presented his consent form with a turnaround right there at Mystic Cobalt on the east side of Watercolor. And on the west side, we, our race will end in between Old Miller Place and Wilderness Way.
Okay.
But we appreciate y'all taking the time to consider this proposal. We're very excited to raise more money for the kids and families of Walton County and even Oaklusive County with our mobile dental bus and our dental clinic on Highway ninety-eight and our medical referral program.
What day of the week is that?
It's gonna be Saturday morning.
Okay, okay, okay. Any further questions, ladies and gentlemen? What's your pleasure?
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, is there any discussion in the board, among the board? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioners. Next item is a request from the Coastal Seniors to utilize the Great Grand property for parking for approximately twenty-five cars on November fifth from about eight AM to six PM. The group is taking a field trip to Apalachicola. They will be joining together at one location to catch a bus. We had originally discussed with them utilizing the annex parking, but realizing that is the last day of early voting, it might not be a good idea to load in another twenty-five cars there. So, their request would be to utilize that space that the county has recently purchased, just for that one day.
I just have one question of Mr. Davis to make sure. We are legally covered, okay?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve. Is there any discussion outside? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Have to be a senior to go, so if you want to go, get online and sign up. And you can go, Sarah.
We have a motion and a second, all those in favor? Motion carries.
Thank you, Commissioners. The next item is a request to hold a public hearing on December thirteen, two thousand sixteen, to consider a resolution of intent electing to use the uniform method of collecting non-adleural special assessments levied within the county. This is a statutory requirement. If we anticipate utilizing the special assessments in the coming year, this does not levy any, does not address any, it simply gives us the platform to move forward if we so desire in two thousand seventeen. So, your action today would be to set a public hearing on December the thirteenth to hear the resolution.
So moved.
We have a motion and a second, is there any discussion among the board? Anyone in the audience? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioners. The next item is a request to approve the employee safety manual submitted by the Department of Risk and Safety. This was presented to you on October the eleventh. We have received comments. Those comments have been incorporated in the final draft and this before you for your approval.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, is there any discussion, any question among the board? Anyone in the audience? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Commissioners. The next item from Public Works, we were recently asked to review McHale Lane to determine if it met requirements for acceptance and maintenance by the county. That assessment has been done and it, and it was found that McHale Lane does indeed meet the current standards of Chapter Five of Land Development Code. Based on that, we would recommend that we do accept that into maintenance. Further, the acceptance will be contingent upon conditions listed in Exhibit A and provided by Public Works. There's a couple of very minor things that need to be accomplished, but we feel comfortable we can get those corrected in short order. And to that end, there's also a street, South Dino Drive. It would be kind of hard to separate the South Dino Drive from McHale. It was constructed at the same time, to the same standards, and we feel it would be in the county's best interest to accept South Dino Drive as well. So, our recommendation would be to accept McHale Lane and South Dino Drive into county maintenance.
Are there, are there any conditions on McHale as well? Or on the connector?
No, sir.
Well, I make a motion to approve with the conditions, and these are the conditions to be taken care of with the landowners, homeowners in the area prior to us accepting it.
Thank you.
A motion and a second, is there any further discussion among the board? Anyone in the audience? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Commissioners. The next item is a request to approve the proposal from Wynton Engineering for consulting services for the Helen McCall Park press box and concession stand in the amount of forty-four hundred dollars. This is to provide professional services in designing the mechanical plumbing and electrical for that facility.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, is there any discussion among the board?
I had a question, and I brought this up yesterday with Buddy concerning the, for the project that's listed on their proposal. They got it at Walton County Fair, and it should be McCall Dairy, I'm not McCall.
McCall Dairy.
Buddy, right, Walton County Public Works. Commissioner, I apologize, we, we did get that corrected and it's in the packet for the chairman to sign, so it was not corrected in your board packages, but it was, was corrected for the chairman to sign.
You just told your age. McCall Dairy. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak to this issue? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Commissioners. The next item is a request to obtain lease financing for the purchase of one Pierce firefighter, three thousand gallon tanker, and two Osage ambulances. These items were included in the budget that you approved for this year. This is just the first step in moving forward and obtaining those pieces of equipment.
Motion to approve.
Second.
A motion and a second, any discussion? Anyone in the audience like to speak to this issue? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
The next item is a request for you to approve revisions to the existing county travel policy regarding preauthorization of travel. The current approved county policy does not address the requirement that is found in statutes for the preauthorization forms for travel. This revision to our existing policy will ensure the county is in compliance with Florida statute as it relates to travel, and it will ensure that the clerk pays those bills.
Motion to approve.
Motion and a second, any discussion? Seeing none, anyone in the audience? In the clerk's office, seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Madam Chair and Commissioners, that's all we have from admin.
Welcome, Mr. Tusa. Hope you're feeling better.
Yes, I am, thank you very much. Good morning, Madam Chair, Commissioners. First up on the agenda, the TDC, we have requested the board to appoint a commissioner and one other person who will serve along with me as an application review committee for the Tourism Development Council applications for qualifications for the open seats on the TDC. We have three seats that are open. It's the tourism-related seat, owner-operator, representing a rental firm, and owner-operator. Those are the three seats that we have open. So, we would like to make a recommendation on the application review committee. Commissioner Jones and I spoke yesterday, and with her being the TDC chair, we think it makes good sense that she be the representative from the BCC, but obviously y'all can do as you wish on that. And then the other person is staying Sunday with administration, with his relationship with the TDC and having served as interim director a couple of times. We think he'd make a great choice.
Let's take those one at the time. First of all, the commissioner to serve on the committee?
Motion for Commissioner Jones.
Right, and it could be the, whatever commissioner is serving.
Correct.
You know, not me every year because I, this might be my last year.
Correct, right.
I have a motion and a second, any discussion among the board? Anyone in the audience? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Nay.
All right, next we have the next seat, does any?
Making a motion, it'd be staying Sunday.
Second it.
Any discussion among the board? Seeing anyone in the audience? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you. And as we will be representing the board in this application process, it is subject to sunshine laws, so we will post it in the newspaper as to when we will meet and review the applications. And we will do that shortly. We plan on bringing that back before you at the December thirteenth meeting, so we can get those folks seated. The current seats end at the end of December, so we have one more meeting on December seventh, I believe, and then the next meeting won't be until February. Next up on the agenda, we have requests approval for the FY seventeen TDC media plan. Back in April, we had come before you and asked for you to approve the cooperative marketing plan, which is part of that media plan, and that was approved. That was about one, two, one point two million dollars in funds for those efforts. And then, in addition to those, which we need to get approved today, is the rest of the media plan, which is our print and ads for leisure, meetings, interactive television, radio, outdoor, and then, of course, beach safety. And that is also in support of our texting program, that comes under our media plan as well. So, I gave you a little handout that I had that I think spells out the plan a little bit better than the big giant worksheet that was including in your board binders. It's a little two-page document that kind of goes over and has the dollars allocated to each one of those. So, if you'd like, I can go into greater detail, or if you want, you can just kind of review it and let me know if you have any questions.
See anyone have any questions of Mr. Tusa? Seeing none, it's your pleasure.
Motion to approve.
Sergeant.
I have a motion and a second, is there any further discussion among the board members? Seeing none, anyone in the audience like to address this issue? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Commissioners. Next item, request approval to seek conceptual design services for a surface parking lot at the Great and Grand property. This was, we just actually spoke about this property a few minutes ago that you approved for the seniors to park there. We need to do some work to this lot, either an asphalt lot or perhaps even gravel, but get some striping done, get some parking barriers kind of put in there. And so, what I'd like to ask is that we have some conceptual design services where we lay all that out and bring that back to you, whether it's asphalt or it's gravel. And then you can decide on how we move forward when we bring you the information. And rough cost for the conceptual design service is three to five thousand dollars.
Jay, have you, have you talked about stormwater? Because if you put in asphalt, I think you're gonna have to address stormwater. I don't know about gravel, but, you know, that might be a consideration. If you could put gravel in or something that you don't have to go the stormwater route, just a suggestion.
Yes, ma'am, that's definitely something we'll take into consideration as we do in the conceptual designs.
Any other questions of Mr. Tusa? Could I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
A motion and a second, any further discussion? Anyone in the audience? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. The next item is to request approval to seek design permitting services for beach access at the Doone Allen parcel that we closed on, I guess about a month ago. Again, the design fees are probably about three to five thousand dollars, and then permitting, I believe, about twenty-five thousand dollars for the permitting for that parcel. We'd like to get moving with this. I don't think we'll have it in time for next season, but we are trying to see if we can get it done by next season.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? Anyone in the audience? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Request approval to demolish or remove the existing structure at the Doone Allen property located at five ninety-nine West thirty-eight. That's the property we just spoke about as far as the design and permitting. We have gotten two estimates, both are coming in right at about seventeen thousand dollars, so we're asking for permission to demolish that at a cost not to exceed twenty-four thousand. So we're asking for permission to demolish that at a cost not to exceed twenty-four thousand dollars.
And the pool's already been filled in, is that correct?
The pool was filled in, but the week following, we bought it.
Good. All right.
But you're taking the pool out.
The pool's been removed. It was removed the week after. Public Works went and did that.
Can you move the house? Is it movable or no?
It's on a slab. It's not movable.
No, there are people that will buy those.
Yeah.
All right. Ladies and gentlemen, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion in second. Is there any further discussion? Anyone? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. And last up on the agenda for us today, request direction on additional real property for beach access and parking. We've had some new parcels come before the TDC since the last BCC meeting where we discussed this. And we've included a map here that might just be easiest for us to kind of look at. We have some beach access, one parking opportunity, which I know we discussed the last meeting. We didn't want to consider parking. But I thought in relationship to where this was, it might be something that you at least want to consider on whether you want to move forward or not with this. We have, on the top of the list, the 5900 block of County Highway 38. That's over in Dune Allen. This is right next door to the beach access that we just purchased last month. This is the Dune One condo association. They are willing to sell us their whole entire condo development. So that is something.
Seriously?
Yes.
What's the price tag?
Fifteen and a half million dollars.
Is that, is that on this, is that on this list here?
Actually, that is an old list. And that's from the last time that we talked about. The new list looks like this one, Commissioner Meadows.
It's in your book.
Yeah, my book. I've got it all on screen here. So let me, yeah.
It's fourteen condos and then the parcel itself, which is the common areas of the condo development. So that's one. Another one is over in the Golf Place area. It's right across the street from Ed Waleen. I think we had a missed opportunity a few years ago, as I understand it, for a parcel of land for parking. And this opportunity is not that parcel, but the one right behind it. So it's in that same block. And it is, if you look at that map there, actually that is... Rick, can you go over a little bit towards Ed Waleen? Oh, you can just go back to the map, Rick, that, okay.
Are you on the one?
You can just go to that map. That's fine.
Are you on the one, 393 Golf Place? Is that one you're on?
Correct. That's it, the three parcels.
Okay.
So if you, if you look right there, that indicator's a little bit higher north than what it actually is. It's a little bit kind of like where the cursor is. It's right across the street from Golf Place. And it's three parcels that are kind of making up like a little L in that block. So it's just about half of that whole block right there. So, and then there's another parcel a little bit further down in the 4100 block of 38. It's kind of the Golf Place area. It's in between Ed Waleen and Golf U Heights. There's a B and B there currently. That, though, is adjacent to, it's right off of 38, but it's adjacent to a thousand feet of beach that we own. The county already owns.
Is that beach, is that the Highlands House, B and B?
Correct.
That's the Highlands House? Okay.
Correct. And then we have Eastern Lake Road on this map right here, but we're not, that was already considered last time. So that was a mistake on my part. So that one's not in consideration. Y'all already put that in the last pitch. And then next, further down in Seacrest, we have an opportunity for two parcels. One is directly on the beach and one is pretty much cat a corner across the street on the north side of 38, where we could do parking and beach access in Seacrest area. Seacrest area, we're really, there's three public beach accesses over there that are neighborhood beach accesses. And that's all we have in the Seacrest area. So that's a very attractive parcel for us to look at. And then lastly, we have somebody presented some bayfront property. And I know we've kind of been looking at beachfront, but I at least thought I'd present that to you. We've been kind of talking about ecotourism and what we can possibly do on the bay with paddling, you know, paddleboards, kayaks. So I thought I'd ask if you wanted to consider that or not at this point.
393, is it?
I think if we consider the Dune Allen one, we need to consider how much it's going to cost to tear the condos down. As well as get, you know.
We could go into the rental, we could go into the rental business. Go into the low-income housing business.
Now, I did ask, I met with Public Works and legal and planning, I guess about a week and a half ago, to go over the other properties that you approved at the last meeting. And so I did mention these to them at that time. And they felt confident that if you wish, we can include these in with the other ones and we can get them all done and present them back at that end of November, beginning of December meeting. But that's totally up to y'all if y'all want to consider them all at once or if you want to look at them in tandem.
I think you ought to look at all of them and, you know, at least give them a shot and look at them and see what's, what's up and what's, what could be done. And, you know, if you have to do one, once, one meeting and then the bunch the next meeting or something like that. But that's what I think.
We'll have an idea of what volume we're looking at and information. And I can even bring that back to you before we look at it.
The Seacrest area is woefully, you know, underserved with, so I think, you know, that's a very, that's a very attractive.
Yeah. I mean, Miramar Beach, we talked about it one of the previous meetings with that opportunity. And then this over in Seacrest. And then also another opportunity over in Seagrove with regional beach access. I mean, we have one regional beach access in the Seagrove area. And we probably could use another one with that being so populated as it is.
Jay, a quick question. I know that we spent a little over fifteen million previously on the parcels. And at that time, I thought there was like twenty-one or twenty-two million of the unrestricted reserves for that. So we're looking at having about six or seven million still available.
We're about eight million dollars. And the last time I checked with finance, they said about eight million dollars.
So when this comes back, I'd like that also brought up as to what we can afford.
Okay.
Vis a vis all the different proposals.
Okay.
Commissioners, I need a little direction too. There's forty-plus parcels now we're looking at. We have kind of held off on ordering title searches on forty-plus properties. Like for Dune One, there's going to be a number of searches because there's individual condos. Do you want us to wait on the ownership? And essentially, all we're doing is an ownership and encumbrance report. Do you want us to hold off until you pick which parcels? Or do you want a title search report on all of them when you make your selection? I mean, we can get them done. It would just, it'd be a little expensive to do forty-plus ones. And so I'm just looking for direction either way.
It's my opinion, we wait until we make a selection. Why pay for something that we're not going to use?
Okay.
So that's, that's just an opinion of one.
Yeah, I agree with that. You know, because some of them may not pan out and we may not have the money, like Bill says.
I can do some quick searching just to make sure there's nothing real crazy about them all. But the full search would be expensive.
It might be when, because the next step would be, we select them and then we do appraisals. And then maybe at that time, legal could do the title search while we're doing the appraisals.
That would be very helpful.
So the question is, ladies and gentlemen, do you want him to add this to the list, basically? All of these to the list and bring it all back to us at one time?
I think so.
Yeah.
Agreed.
Okay, we agree. Okay. We don't need to vote on this. You're just asking for directions.
Correct.
So go forward with that, okay?
Sure. And that's it.
You don't have any updates?
No updates.
It's a beautiful day in Walton County, South Walton.
Absolutely is.
Thank you, sir.
Traffic's still down there too. The traffic is still very congested.
People are still there.
I mean, we did, we had a great October break. People coming from Tennessee, Kentucky. So it was, I mean, to quote Kurt Tape, who has the Hibiscus B and B, I was chatting with him one day and he goes, "It's like a mini spring breakout here." So that's good to see that your shoulder seasons are building a little bit. Not quite, obviously, to the, what the volume is during the summer. I don't know if we'll ever see that, just the way people take vacations during the summer. But it is nice that, you know, we have that economic impact with jobs, people making money in the off-season.
Very good. Thank you. Any questions of Mr. Tusa? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Next, we will go back to the public hearing to consider the ordinance of ending Walton County's Code of Ordinances, Chapter 22, Walton County Waterways and Beach Activities. Do I have a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right.
Commissioners, you have now passed the previous ordinance regarding customary use. We have a conflicting provision in Chapter 22 that we would need to strike. And we would ask you to essentially strike that section. It's in Section 22, gosh, I had it marked. I don't know what happened. Twenty-two fifty-two, twenty-two dash fifty-two, which essentially says this ordinance makes no findings regarding customary use. Obviously, you've made findings now in a separate ordinance to avoid conflicting ordinances. We would ask that you adopt this amendment to Chapter 22.
Didn't you also add a definition for tent?
We did, yes, sir. I forgot to mention that. Thank you, Mr. Tusa. We sure did. And that's the request.
Any further questions from the board? Those in the audience that wanted to speak on this issue? First have Richard Butella. Okay. Alice Butella. Nora Murphy. Okay. John Bausch. I think he's gone. And Frank Day. Okay? So, all right. Does anyone like, want to speak on this issue at this time? All right. Seeing none? Any further questions of the attorney? Could I have a motion to go out of public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. All right. What's your pleasure, ladies and gentlemen?
Motion to approve as amended.
Motion to approve as amended. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion in second. All those, you want to clarify those?
We got a question previously about the size of the umbrellas. And this goes to the ten-foot. Are we going to the eight-foot or are we giving it a ten-foot?
I think it's ten feet. It's a ten feet. Ten feet. Everybody's shaking their head, ten feet.
Ten feet. Okay. Most are eight, but ten would be the max. Okay? Any other questions? Seeing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Commissioners, the next item I have is a request to, for the board to review. This is the review portion of this particular ordinance proposal regarding waiving the requirement that a property owner file an annual application or statement for the additional home state exemption for persons sixty-five years or older in accordance with Section 196.0119 of the Florida statutes. Briefly, board, there is an additional home state exemption which you authorized per statute in 2000, which allows those persons who are above the age of sixty-five to receive an additional exemption on their taxes of fifty thousand dollars. The statute requires an application and then an annual application. Once you're approved, then you have to come back in and ask for an annual renewal to the property appraiser's office. Section 196.0119 allows the county to waive the annual application or statement to retain the additional home state exemption. The Walton County Property Appraiser, Mr. Pilcher, has asked us to implement that waiver proceeding. He feels like the annual application causes a lot of confusion amongst seniors and costs him time and money to process. So all we're asking you to do is review this ordinance and we will have it on for adoption at the next meeting. And then, Commissioners, we had an addition to the agenda. And I appreciate you allowing me to add it so late. We actually sold a piece of, very small piece of property in the middle of other property. And the land use, future land use when we sold it is public facilities. We made some commitments about changing that over to, I think, rural residential. We just, quite frankly, didn't do it. And we just need your permission to authorize staff to begin that process for and on behalf of the folks. It's actually been transferred one other time, but the folks are currently on the property.
Do you need a motion for that or just direction?
Actually, a motion in second would be helpful.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion in second. Any further discussion among the board? Anyone in the audience? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Commissioner Meadows.
Oh, already?
I know. Time passes quickly, doesn't it?
Yes. I actually have two things. The first one is, it says request to schedule a public hearing, but I understand that a public hearing is not really needed. But asking that we will discuss. Hedlin, just letting everybody know that I'm going to put this on the November 7th under my name, Hedlin Avenue Beach Access. Because there is some additional information on that. And so I am, the six months has passed that's required to be able to put it back on the agenda. So I'm going to ask that it be put back on the agenda. And if it has to be under my name, that's fine. But that it will be on the November 7th agenda so that everyone involved can be aware of that. And that's just a comment that I have. So the second item I have is that last time I brought up the fact that I thought that the Fox Lake parcel property of twenty-nine point some odd acres would be an excellent choice to spend some of the preservation fund money on and maybe add some other funds to it to create a, almost a thirty-acre passive conservation, preservation, recreation setting in, on a parcel that has many, many issues. We could solve stormwater with it. We could solve the preservation, the creation of a vibrant and vital preservation area because there's enough land there. We could have wetlands for school studies and things like that. We could have a nature park, a walk, could have identification of plants and various things. Also too, we could limit the traffic that a development on that would create on 393, which is already over capacity. And we could, we could really restrict, we could have cars going in on Ridge Road with a little parking lot. And we could have golf carts going in on Bunker Road part so that it's a walk to, bike to, ride a golf cart to. And you could park your car there if you wanted to. But it would be, you know, it would be a gated park. You could close it at night, just like all of our other parks. And so I'd like to ask that we move forward and at least get two appraisals on that property. And from what I understand, I spoke with members of the bank and some other folks. And they said that they would certainly entertain the county purchasing it. And so I think, you know, we've kind of got that resolved there. So I would like to just ask the admin to go ahead and get two appraisals, bring it back to the board, obviously, whenever, as soon as possible. But, you know, whenever you can, whenever we can get those appraisals done. And it doesn't negate the fact that, you know, there may be a development on there. The development may come forward. So that may, you know, that may actually come forward as well. But this would give us a look at it to see what kind of value it would have to the county and what we could, what we could do with that, with that property. And the other two parcels to the east, somebody else owns those. They haven't offered those to us. If they would like to, that would be great. But we are really looking at the thirty acres on, that was known as Fox Lake. So that would be my recommendation.
I do have some questions. Yeah, I know the bank owns it. But if, it's my understanding, and correct me if I'm wrong. I mean, a lot of this is wetlands that it's not usable. So how really, you know, valuable is this piece of property to development, you know?
Well, obviously, it's valuable because they can get a hundred and something, a hundred and twenty single-family homes on it. So, you know, it is, they do have a plan that shows a hundred and twenty houses and it does, it does work. Yeah. Yeah. So there's enough uplands on this that, that, yeah, it's a developable piece.
At the last meeting, we asked Stan to meet with the bank. And I was just wondering if you were able to do that and what you came away, what kind of information you came away with.
Yes, ma'am. I have had conversations with Representative of Trustmark Bank. He provided me a survey of the, or a copy of the survey of the thirty acres. Gave me a purchase price. And I have asked for a written proposal to that effect, but have yet to receive that.
What was the purchase price?
Six million.
Six million. And we have three point three in preservation. Where would we come up with additional, less than three million? Or where could we come up with it if we were going to proceed with this?
Last account I had of the preservation fund, it was three point three and change in there. Last account I had of the preservation fund, it was three point three and change in there.
So, it would be less than three million?
I think there's restore, I think there's some restore money left from the, the thing that we got, the restore payment that we got, I think, three or four years ago. I think there's some money left in there. I think it's worth pursuing, though. I mean, I think if you can't find the money, you can't find the money. But I think if you can, if you can, it's certainly worth pursuing.
Well, I'll certainly support your, your request to have, what'd you say, not a survey, but a, two appraisals?
How much would the two appraisals cost, like six thousand?
I don't remember. Larry, I remember what we got charged on the last ones.
They're fifteen hundred, twenty-five hundred, maybe three thousand.
Each, for each lot?
Yes, ma'am.
I, before we spend that money, I'd like to see something writing from the bank. I mean, we need to know exactly what we're dealing with as far as, I mean, that's just my, my take on it.
I think that the bank would, I don't know, I talked to them, I talked to their representative, and, you know, it's like any other land deal. You know, it's like any other land purchase, you know, you, we would do the appraisals, and then we would do what we do. We say, we can pay this much, you know, get in, negotiate it, and I don't know if they'd write a letter or not, but they did tell me that they would, that they would sell it and that they would like to see the county, they would like to see it as a county property. So, but, you know, that could be part of, that could be part of it. But just the fact that we could go ahead, move forward with two appraisals, I think, and move forward with, with, with expressing an interest in it and an interest in buying it. Because if we don't, if we don't take advantage now, I think that the window of opportunity will close.
No, I think sometimes banks, when they find out that the county's interested, all of a sudden, woo-yay, you know? They need to understand that the county, you know, that we're pretty tough customers up here.
Oh, yeah, they, they understand that, but, yeah, they're a bank, they, they're businessmen, they, they, they understand all of that.
Was that a motion?
Do I have to make a motion? Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, my motion is to, that we proceed with getting two appraisals on the Fox Lake property and bring it back to the board for, you know, consideration and talk about the funding and the other aspects of it.
All right. Do I have a second? If not, I will step down and make the, and I will make the second. Is there any further discussion among the board? Oh, I'm sorry.
Do we have an idea of how much money's in the restore account?
Offhand, I don't know if Melissa's still here, she could probably shed some light on it. We've just certainly not looked into what other funds would be available.
Yeah, that was just a fund I thought about that I know that's...
There's one point six million left in there.
So, we would still have to come up with two?
Yes, ma'am.
Or, let's see, one and a half, a little bit less than one.
Well, and again, you know, people's asking price, last time we heard it was six point five million, now it's six million. So, you know...
Commissioner Chapman has the floor.
Yeah, go ahead, I'm sorry.
I know he's looking at using the proportionate fair share funds, is that right?
Be, it would be the preservation funds.
Well, that's three point something million. And as I've read the ordinance, it has nothing to do with, it has to be totally expended south of the bay, that it could be used. And I had already advised the board earlier that I want to use at least a half a million of it for some improvements of our ramps and other locations along Chalktahatch River. So, it's still going to be short. Significantly short.
Significantly short.
Anyone else, Commissioner Commander?
No.
Commissioner Meadows, you have anything else?
No, not at this time.
We have a motion and a second. Do we have any comments from the public? With none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All against, nay, so it would be two to three, okay? Give me my gavel back.
All right, we'll move on. Mr. Imfeld.
Madam Chair, District Three has a opening on the Zoning Board of Adjustments, and we have the appropriate forms filled up by Mr. John Dixon. I'd like to recommend him as the appointment to District Three Representative on the Zoning Board of Appeals.
Appeals or adjustments?
Adjustments, excuse me.
Adjustments, all right.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, is any discussion? Anyone in the audience? Seeing none, all those in favor? All right, Ms. Jones, do you have anything?
I do not, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Chapman.
No, ma'am.
All right, I do have one thing I think we need to, we have talked over and over and over about how we help our beaches and the beachgoers and the property owners and that sort of thing. Mr. Tusa and I have discussed at length the need for more either code enforcement officers from the beach, from the TDC, or we've also discussed people at all the regional accesses having at least two people there, advising people as they go down to the beach where you can't take glass and if your dog, you're, are you a Walton County resident, you have a tag for your dog? All these things, as we look at customary use, I think we need, if we're going to help protect our beaches, I think it's vital that we have more people, have more hands on and more ambassadors on the beach. And I think now's the time to look at that. And also, before February, whenever, of course, beach vendors get their license again, I think we really need to take a look at that. But I would like to perhaps suggest that we take a look at how many, and ask Mr. Tusa to come back to us with how many, I mean, full-time people that he needs, because these seasonal people, about the time they learn what they're supposed to learn, then they're gone. So, somehow, we need to hire people and utilize them on, if you want to call it an off-season, I don't think we have one anymore, in other areas of the TDC, I think that's appropriate. But I would like to ask Mr. Tusa to come back to us with his recommendation of what he thinks we need to help our beaches. I guess I don't need a motion for that, I'm just ask Mr. Tusa to do that. Mr. Davis?
Yes, I mean, you're seeking direction from the board to Mr. Tusa, so he would not need a motion.
May I do that?
We're not spending any money at this point.
So, basically, a plan to take care of the accesses, and we have a wonderful volunteer program that's arising. If we could somehow join forces with them, and, you know, if we do go this direction and we have a code officer slash beach ambassador, because I really feel like it's important that we not, not only just have an ambassador, but have a code officer that can issue citations if they need to. Then, if we could encompass, you know, ask, ask the volunteers to work with us, we could have, you know, one, one officer and then volunteers that commit to that beach, that, I think it would be a wonderful program.
We can take a look at that, and we can bring it back to you at the next meeting.
That would be terrific, thank you so much.
Great, thank you.
That is, that is all I have, believe it or not. Next, we have citizens' requests. Robert Raymond, is he here?
Yes.
Okay.
Hi, thank you for seeing me, Robert Raymond. I'm not very high-tech, but I have...
R-A-Y-M-O-N-D.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Yes. Can I pass these out to you?
Yes.
Thank you for seeing me, well, I should wait.
All right, proceed, sir.
The reason I, I am seeing you today is my road, which is a private road, deeded private access road, that at some point was put into county maintenance. I can't see any, I can't find any documentation where that happened. It did come before the board, but we, as residents, would request that we be removed from the county maintenance as it. We do not have any notification, and we do not want to imply any ownership. It's a deeded private street, and we don't want that to continue based on the use that may eventually turn it into commercial access. Pretty much is what I have. If it is not something that can be removed, I'd like to have the legal look into the issues of it being on county maintenance.
All right, thank you, sir.
See that clearly?
I got a question for him. Mr. Raymond, there's a list of four parcels on different named streets. Are you asking that all of these street or just Dalton?
Just one of them went on, and it's Dalton.
Dalton.
So, we have a shared interest, and the group has all the streets, but for some reason Dalton just got put on.
Commissioners, what I would suggest is Dalton Road was placed by motion and second and vote of the board to be placed on the county maintained list. It's my understanding that a portion of it, except I think the last hundred and forty feet, has been maintained off and on by the county. To take it off, you can't just decide to take it off, you have to actually go through the formal abandonment process. So, I would suggest that you refer this request to Public Works and let them vet whether or not they need, want to, to go through the abandonment process and then bring the recommendation back to you.
Well, and because we, let me just ask, because we do have an ongoing issue with, with a piece of property right there at Dalton Drive, should we wait until after that is, is over?
I strongly suspect it will take longer than when, when that's scheduled, so if you want to do that, that's fine.
Okay, I was just asking, what was the right thing to do?
It won't matter either way.
That is why we brought it up, is the additional parcel. And I don't know, does Public Works look at the actual legal aspect of being able to make?
Question for the attorney, does a, if the county accepts the maintenance of a roadway, but yet a deed says that it's private, you know, everybody owns part of it, can the county actually do that? Is that a legal maneuver or process or procedure?
It's a really, really good question, because I don't know at the time whether all of the folks who lived on or own property on the road actually agreed to county maintenance. So, I don't know whether the folks who made the offer had the apparent or actual authority to do so. Having said that, the fact that we have maintained a portion of it under the latest case law I can find, because we've done that, we can't just stop or quit or say we're not going to do it anymore. We actually do have to go through the formal abandonment process.
Go through a process and abandon our, abandon our...
Acceptance, whether we had the authority or they had the authority or not.
Can I comment on that, actually? I do have signed documentation from owners who owned at that time, and there was no notification. There was a small notice that went out to four or five, but there's six people currently who've already signed that were owned parcels at that time.
So, it looks to me like there's some, there's some...
There's some question there.
Big questions.
Well, do you want us to direct Public Works to look into this issue and bring it back to us?
With my assistance.
With his assistance.
Can we do that before any, can we have that happen before any decision is made on a parcel that would affect it dramatically?
We will try, I won't make any guarantees to you, but we'll certainly try.
I think, I think that, that might be...
We'll have a recommendation from Public Works by that time.
Do I need a motion for that, Mr. Davis, or are we just directing staff?
I think you're just directing staff.
All right, so moved, thank you, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Next, we have other public comments. And at this time, those of you who would like to comment on something that was not on the agenda, but you are welcome at this time to come up and do so. Again, as always, you can make your way to the front, sir. State your name for the record and spell your last name, please.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Good morning, Honorable Commissioners. Thank you for the opportunity to speak here today. My name is David Bailey, spelled B-A-I-L-E-Y, and I am here as the Town Manager of Rosemary Beach. My office address is 200 West Water Street in Rosemary Beach, and my home address is 181 Pine Street in Grayton Beach. The Rosemary Beach Property Owners Association supports the goal of establishing greater public access to the public areas of the beach here in Walton County. We appreciate the recent efforts of the Board of County Commissioners and the TDC to purchase additional upland and beach properties on both the Gulf of Mexico and Chalktahatchie Bay. That said, the sudden adoption of the customary use ordinance is alarming, and we object strongly to the lack of consideration given to the many impacts, both short and longer term, that this ordinance is very likely to have on individual property owners, neighborhoods, and the larger local economy. Over the past twenty years, the owners in Rosemary Beach, like Seaside, Alice Beach, and many other world-renowned developments here in South Walton, have complied with the many requirements placed on them by Walton County, only to have the rules now proposed to be changed when our massive investments of time and money have achieved unprecedented benefit for the entire county, generating thousands of jobs and enormous value for local residents and businesses. In June 2016, Chapter 22 of the LDC was, from the perspective of Gulffront property owners, suddenly and with minimal meaningful input from those impacted most, amended in an effort to address the concerns of the public, the public having access to the shoreline. Now, after less than four months and without a public evaluation of the effectiveness of that amendment, customary use ordinance is, has been adopted. We were hopeful and have heard, many of both, on both sides of this issue, have felt that the amendment to Chapter 22 was helpful. Our association is the owner of 2,300 lineal feet of private common area beach as documented in the several plats approved by Walton County. Rosemary Beach contains 542 upland properties, and we have maintained our community beach walkovers and beaches as private since the founding of the town in 1995. In the extremely short amount of time that's been available to us, we cannot know what the impact of this ordinance will have on our property values, our internal economy, or access to our private common areas. We are extremely concerned that the longer-term effects of this course will be devastating to the unique character of South Walton and with equally devastating impacts on the individual residents and businesses. I'm here, therefore, to express our extreme disappointment in the adoption of this ordinance, and I'm left just looking forward to the process mentioned today for further discussion and perhaps reconsideration of the overly broad scope of this ordinance. Thank you again for the opportunity to speak to you today.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak to an issue at this time?
Morning, Commissioners. Ted Missildine, M-I-S-S-I-L-D-I-N-E. I'm a resident at 129 Dalton Drive and have owned property since 1991 there. As an owner in the Dalton unrecorded subdivision and recorded in Walton County Book 52, pages 478 to 480, I'm granted a fractional ownership in five parcels. Those parcels are expressly recorded for use as private roads only and for access to my said property. I've not now in the, or in the past, sole traded or surrendered my interest in the above parcels to any person or entity. I have not authorized any person or agent on my behalf to dispose of my interest in the mentioned parcels. I've not expressed or implied that said parcels may be used by anyone other than those with a shared ownership as a private road for access to their property. I request that Walton County abandon any maintenance, use, or improvement of Dalton Drive. I further request that any signage showing that the above parcels are for other than private use by owners of the Dalton subdivision be removed. I understand that at that point, maintenance and repair and improvement will be the responsibility of the fractional owners of the said parcels. I'm a private owner with fractional ownership and do not consent to the private use of my road. Dalton Drive is not an easement. It is recorded parcel. My deed and the legal description of my lot state I have an interest in a deeded parcel. I never relinquish my rights, nor have they been taken from me by due process. The majority of the Dalton Drive residents agree. I have owned since 91, I was never notified. There was one individual who approached a commissioner and with a handshake, it was taken to a BCC meeting and voted on. Thank you.
Is there anyone else at this time that would like to speak to any issue? All right, seeing none, we will move on into our Planning and Development Services portion of the meeting. Give us a few minutes to switch out books, and we'll be with you. Yes? Sorry, I seem to have lost some. We will wait, we'll wait another minute, but, you know... Pretty much. See, I'm, for the first time, I'm not, huh-uh. Of course, I have on a jacket. Why don't you have a sweater, huh? Oh, okay, she's okay? Okay, good. I'm sorry, ladies and gentlemen, we need to wait a second. Were you the hero, Commissioner Chapman? No? All right, Mr. Dyes.
Madam Chairman, our items are all QJ items to be sworn in.
Before the board regarding any of the quasi-judicial items on the agenda, please stand and raise your right hand, so I can swear you in. Each of you solemnly swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give before this board will be the truth. When you come to the podium, would you please say that you have been sworn? And for the record, spell your last name. Commissioners, any of you received any ex parte contacts on any of the quasi-judicial items? You have, have you turned them in, those of you who have?
I have, and I will.
Okay, and would any of those quasi-judicial contacts prevent you from rendering a fair and impartial decision regarding any of the matters on the docket? I hear all no's. Thank you. Mr. Dyes?
Commissioners, the first item on our agenda is the Robert O'Brien Lot Split. This was continued from your last October 11th meeting. This is a request for a lot split of 0.41 acres on 15 Carson Lane. It is in the neighborhood infill land use district, which requires it to be a major development order. Staff has reviewed this and has no issues with this lot split.
Any questions? Any questions, ladies and gentlemen? Anyone in the audience like to speak to this issue? Anybody hiding behind the pillow? I can't see them. All right, ladies and gentlemen, what's your pleasure?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Have a motion and second to approve this issue. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Madam Chairman, the next item is the Pando Small Scale Amendment. I'll ask Christine Semen from our staff to come and brief the Commissioner on this project.
Good morning, Commissioners. Madam Chair, this is a request from Susan Pando, Pondo, I believe it's pronounced, via McNeil Carroll Engineering for a small-scale map amendment on approximately 2.51 acres from Conservation Residential 2 to 1 to Low Density Residential. The proposed amendment is requested to support a proposed 10-lot, single-family residential subdivision. And currently, as proposed, the current land use would not allow for that, so this is the reason for the request. And I believe that we have someone from McNeil Carroll Engineering to speak, and if you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer them.
Good morning. Robert Carroll, C-A-R-R-O-L-L. I'm with McNeil Carroll Engineering, 17-800 Panama City Beach Parkway. I'll pass out a few maps for you as well. It's the same ones on this board, just a smaller version for you. If you'll look at the larger sheet, the 11-17, which is the one that I have here on the board, it's got lots of numbers on there. The subject property is shown. Ms. Pondo has owned this property for 38 years. It's been in her family, so she's owned that prior to most of the regulations that we have in place today. So everything has kind of been developed around her family's property. So if you look at all the numbers on there, 1 through 10 in blue, what those numbers represent is part of this process, we have to do the compatibility analysis and see what the surrounding neighborhoods are, what the densities are. And when you start looking at those numbers, you'll see that everybody around her that's been developed, they all have a greater density than what she currently allows, either being built that way or the allowable densities. The red number on the side, you'll see there's a chart on the right-hand side. The blue is what the actual densities are that are built, and the red are what the allowable densities are. I've also put some big red numbers on there where her property is, just to the east. That property is allowed up to eight units per acre. North of them is eight units per acre. Just north of her is eight units per acre, and then also the rest of them, most of them are all four or greater. So current density allows us two units per acre, and we're asking to go to four, which is what everyone else around has been granted and what they're allowed to do. I'm going to flip this over, and if you look at the small map with me. This map is in your staff report, with the exception of, there was an update. There's a property. That was recently, they came before you, and you allowed them to change their land use, and your map still reflects it as brown, so it doesn't show the update. So within the past eighteen months, there have been three properties within this neighborhood that have all come before you, asking for the same exact request from the low, from the Conservation Residential to the Low Density. You've approved every single one of those. One of those came before you, asking for eight units per acre. That was denied, but during that meeting, the gentleman asked, what density would you allow? And I think four was the number that was given to him, so therefore he came back and asked for four, and you granted that request. So therefore, in the past eighteen months, two of them being this year, same exact request that were here before you, y'all have granted and approved. We're mindful of that. We didn't come in trying to ask for eight, even though we're surrounded by eight, 10, 12. We merely only want the four, which is what you allowed everyone else in the neighborhood to do. I'm going to flip back to my map and just talk real quickly. Whether the property gets developed as is or if you allow the additional density, the traffic flow, there's an existing stubout that's located in the southeast corner of the property. So they use that access, come to the Michaela, and they'll come up north on Dino Drive and then turn Luna Lane before you get to 393. I was not at the planning board meeting. I had a prior commitment, so someone else from my office was there. I understand there were a few objections, and the objection comes from the property owners to the west. Our traffic flow would not go in front of their houses because the road stops right in front of them now. Also, they have a very large buffer between their property and ours, which creates a nice separation there. What we intend to do is to build our access roadway along our eastern property line. And then that roadway, we will build that roadway all the way to the northern property line. That way, in the future, if the property to the north is built, they can continue the same roadway until they tie into Seacraft, and that way it provides interconnectivity with the entire neighborhood for first responders, trash trucks, and that way we're not all on dead-end streets. So we're simply here to ask for the same thing that you've allowed everyone else to do, nothing more, nothing less. We're not asking for double the density. We're asking just for the same thing that, as you see from the pattern, that everyone else has been allowed to do. So that's our request.
I have one. The first map you handed out, was that part of the staff report or not? I'm sorry, I wasn't in the room.
This was a map that I, I provided a copy.
It was not, okay. Madam Chair, we'll need to accept that map into evidence if.
Do you want an extra copy?
No. I thought I'd recommend you accepted.
I will do so.
I just have a quick question. Okay, explain to me again how you'll access the site. You said you build a road on the east side, so where would you access the site? From the south or?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, yeah, it's hard to see. It's hard to see if there's a road, okay.
So there's an existing road here.
Okay.
There's a stubout that already comes up to our property.
Okay.
And there's an existing 33 feet on either property.
Right.
And it comes all the way through.
To Seacraft and Seacraft is being built out too. So you would come up Michaela Lane? Michaela Lane, whatever it is?
Michaela, I think.
Michaela, okay.
That's the way I pronounce it. I may be wrong as well.
Okay, okay. And that's the one that the county just accepted?
Correct.
Okay, okay. Now, can you get out to the south at all?
No, ma'am.
You can't?
No, ma'am.
Okay, okay. But that would provide a loop. I got you. Okay. Right, and then out to there. Okay, that's, that's what I just, the only question. Oh, the, the, well, you're not really dealing with stormwater now because you're an amendment. Okay, never mind.
Stormwater traffic, all that will be dealt. We know there's some prop share, but again, everybody's dealing with the prop share. We all pay our fair share of it.
Okay, and, and that will, that will all be done at the development stage?
Yes, ma'am.
Should you do, okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Any further questions, ladies and gentlemen? Anyone in the audience would like to speak to this matter? Yes, ma'am, if you would come forward, please. Have you been sworn? All righty.
For the record, I was sworn in.
I'm Susan Pondo, and I'm the owner of this property, and I have been sworn in, and Pondo's, P-A-N-D-O.
Thank you, ma'am.
And I just wanted to say that I was in my twenties when my parents and I bought this property, and we wanted to build something on it a long time ago, but life happens. And so now I'm in the process of where I would, when we bought this property, there were no, so 38 years ago, there were no restrictions. So anyway, and so I'm excited to be able to look forward to the future of building a house, and I would like to sell some of the lots and also that I want to build here and live here, and I, and that's why we bought the property here, is because I grew up in the Panhandle in Calhoun County in Bluntstown, so my dad was a forester, and he went out and walked the land 38 years ago. So I feel like I have the best interest of Santa Rosa and Walton County at heart, and I want to keep the beauty of it, and I'm not asking to build high rises or anything. But anyway, so that's the personal part of this project. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Anyone else? Yes, sir. Come forward, please. You have been sworn. Very good.
I'm Paul Kauf. I live at 32 North Dino Drive. It's the property, there's five homes that are directly west of this property. When we bought our property.
Would you spell your name for the record?
Yes, K-A-U-F, like is it Frank? Sorry. We're directly west of the property. We have the five homes that sit right against it, and when ours were built, the first 200 feet of our lots are where our homes are, and then the last hundred feet is preservation that butts up directly against this. When we bought it, it was CR21. In fact, the stuff on Louva Lane was CR21 at the same time. We, you know, the gentleman spoke that he's just trying to get what everybody else got. Well, each one of those times we came in and we tried to tell you we didn't want that to happen because we bought our lots with the idea that we knew what the density was. So I guess I'm always under the opinion that, you know, when I make a financial decision of what I'm going to do, it was based upon that, and things slowly but surely get changed, and then we get more and more. I mean, we've gone, you know, the amount of houses that compared to what it was supposed to be when we moved in is, you know, gone on quite a bit. The, I also noticed on the notice that came out to us, it said that the traffic study does not support the traffic going back there, and we don't know how many years it's going to be before they get that back through. The comment, the gentleman said that, that Dino Drive dead ends. It does not anymore. It goes all the way to Seacraft now, so we will get traffic going back across that now. The lots that got put next to ours, even though they may have been originally plotted for more homes, the developers around there have seen the area and see what it's going to, and they're both five houses on two and a half acre lots, just like ours. The ones right next to us have the exact same preservation at the back of their lots too. So this idea that everybody is increasing the density and it's all that is not really true. It may stay that, say that what it was originally plotted to be, but the development in that area has become more larger lots. People who are living there across the street, there's still some, it's a little bit smaller lots, and we would have preferred that the stuff next to them, McCloskey's house that was on Louva Lane, stays CR21, but I think the developer came in and shocked everybody with 20 homes, and then, oh, we can go back down to 10, and got what he probably really wanted in the first case. And I just, I respectfully say that I would like you to leave it the way it was. That's what we were told it was going to be, and I don't understand why it should be changed. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Yes, ma'am.
Good morning. My name is Denise Kauf. I've been sworn in. The last name is spelled K-A-U-F. And could I provide you with a couple of pages to look at?
Certainly, as long as you pass them to the clerk, please.
And provide a copy to the applicant's representative, if you would.
To, sure.
Ms. Kauf, I assume you want this moved into evidence, is that correct? This document?
Sure, that'd be great.
Any objections from the applicant? Rob, do you have any objections to this document? There are no objections from the applicant, I'd recommend you accept it.
We will do so.
Thank you.
Please go ahead, ma'am.
Thank you. I wanted to address our neighborhood, which I think the engineer misspoke on what our neighborhood looks like and tried to present his side as very high-density, and we're not high-density, but I do want to point out, the 15 acres that I say is my neighborhood, it's the 15 acres, if you look at the diagram that I provided you, you'll see that where you see Emma Huggins and then the orange property below that, the Michaela Lane, the subject parcel, and my neighborhood is between the subject parcel and Emma Huggins, where it says neighborhood infill, but that's really just six lots with the 100 feet of preservation behind our homes. So we only have six lots on about 2.2 acres, and if you look at the first page of the stapled items, I live at Spyglass Hill, like I said, six homes, and we're very happy with, with the space that we have and the preservation area that we have. Behind us, there should be a similar property with five homes with preservation area. It's conservation zoning on the property behind us, and as you know, that we are slowly losing all the conservation planned parcels in Walton County or South Walton County. So this would be unique, and I think we should keep this area unique and less density. Now, in regards to the engineer saying that there's large amounts of homes around us, there are two areas being developed to the north of us and the north of the Emma Huggins Square. Each of those parcels, and you're going to talk about one later, they will each have, I believe it's five homes, so north of us, over two acres with five homes, across the street from that, right on top, right above the Emma Huggins Square, there will also be just five homes. But I wanted to show you on the stapled page, out of the 15 acres, what was planned as part of the comprehensive plan and the actual lots that are around me. And as I mentioned, I'm on six lots. That was the plan for Scott Wood and Bill Abbott, and we have six lots. Gulf Reflections across the street, that was owned for, I believe it was Neighborhood Infill, 15 lots. Shadow Pines and Michaela Lane, that was conservation, five acres of conservation that the conservation didn't occur. It was only supposed to be 10 acres, or 10 lots, I'm sorry. 30 lots are sitting on Michaela. So that's 20 lots over the plan. Gulf Place Retreat, the planning commission and you all agreed to double the density, and that's in my neighborhood, from five lots to 10. The Conservation 21 went away, and there's no conservation really to speak of in that area. And the McCloskeys fought hard to keep that because they were under the impression that the property next to them would be Conservation 21. And then the Panda Project or Pondo Project is the last one listed. If you let that double the density, I've gone from 41 homes planned to 71 homes, and that's 30 over the plan. On the second page, I just wanted you to visually see what we're doing to South Walton density-wise. The first plot would be if you had gone with the comprehensive plan, I would have 41 homes around me. homes around me on fifteen acres. Instead, I have your bottom chart. I have seventy-one homes on fifteen acres, and you can see if you continue the trend, Walton County's not going to be the unique Walton County with conservation areas. Our traffic flow, obviously, traffic is an issue. The beach access is an issue. The crowded beaches are an issue. And at some point, we have to stop doubling the comprehensive plan density. And I'm just asking you to respectfully consider not allowing ten homes built on the property that we're looking at here, and restrict it to the zoning of five, five homes.
Thank you, ma'am. Is there anyone else? Yes, sir.
Good morning. My name is Mike Hewitt, H-E-W-I-T-T, and I have been sworn in eighty and ninety-two Luvva Lane. I came before the same commission about a year ago. Some of the prior speakers were referring to a developer, that would be me. I came to you and asked for a land use amendment change. The amendment was denied, and at that meeting, several of the commissioners voiced support for a land use of LDR, Low Density Residential, which is four units to the acre. Some of the residents which have spoken here today, one of which it has not, which lives directly adjacent to my parcel, spoke in opposition to the project. I made a commitment to the commissioners at that time to meet with the resident, and I met in their living room and tried to work out, give them some understanding of what I was going to develop. I even, in every development, is required to maintain some preservation. So I did maintain the amount of preservation required by the Land Development Code. I actually moved it to be placed between that landowner and myself in an attempt to try to please or appease this adjacent landowner, which apparently it did not, but I did my best. I did what I said I would do, okay? And I'm currently building homes in that development. It's no surprise that the same adjacent landowners have voiced their opposition today, but I'm simply here to voice my support of it, okay? She's not asking for six or eight units to the acre, which are adjacent to her parcels. This is simply four units to the acre, and even though Mr. Abbott has chosen to do five acres, or five home sites on his land off of Seacroft, this is not what she's chosen to do. Mr. Abbott's doing a very nice development, and I appreciate the project that he's putting together. This is not an extreme density. It's four units. It's, it is what it says, low-density residential. In addition to that, I've had an opportunity to come to speak in person to several other commissioners and ask what you would like to see in this area. And those commissioners voiced an opinion that said low-density residential is something that is 100% consistent with what's in the area, and that is what you would be willing to support. So as an adjacent landowner, that's why I'm here, to support the land use change from conservation residential to low-density residential. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mark, the lady wants to speak again. Do I do that? She's already spoken once.
Is this the applicant or the neighbor?
No, the neighbor.
No, ma'am.
No, ma'am, I'm sorry. Yeah. Yes, sir. Another person with a broken arm.
Thanks. I've been sworn in. My name's Graham Matthews, M-A-T-T-H-E-W-S, and I'm speaking in favor of the proposition. Just to underline what Mr. Carroll said, his compared parcel submission, there were ten lots, ten items, ten areas, ten parcels to be considered. Country Club Drive is the least dense, but it's quite a bit further north from the proposed parcel. Aside from that, if it's approved at four lots per acre, this will be the second least dense of the currently existing homes. The people in North Dino have lovely lots. There's a big buffer adjacent to the Pondo property. When they walk out their front door, there's a fairly high density across the street. The impact visually on them of this property development, whether it's four lots or eight lots per acre, is going to be minimal. And as already mentioned by Mr. Carroll, the likelihood is that the traffic flow is going to be modified such that there won't be, there'd be very little traffic ultimately going through their front yard. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else at this time? Hear from the applicant again?
Yes, if he has a rebuttal, yes.
You have a rebuttal.
Thank you. Robert Carroll again. Note that this is for an allowable density of four units per acre, which would allow up to ten units. We have not submitted any plans for ten units. We've not drawn anything on paper. So the adjacent resident, they, the first gentleman said five units, but it is actually six, and the young lady's agreed that it was six units. They have, in order for us to get to six, we have to have this. We've not chosen to do six, seven, eight, nine, ten, but in order to gain one unit, we have to have this request. So there's just, I just want to make the record straight, that we're not asking for ten lots. That is just what the maximum that could be built there if this is granted. So, thank you.
All right, thank you. Anyone else? Okay, all right, ladies and gentlemen?
Madam Chair, I've got a concern. It appears that the Cows did due diligence when they bought their property. They took a look to see what was available, and what was or was not going to be built around them. Obviously, they've been surprised by some of the, the changes that have been made, and this is another one that would, for their quality of life anyhow, seem to be further diminution. Without seeing the specific plan of what was going to go on in this, I don't think that I would be favored this time of changing anything.
Anyone else?
I'm going to have to agree with Commissioner Infill on that. We, I remember about a year or so, a year and a half ago, we did a land use change up on Highway Ninety east of the Funniac, and it was, everybody was ready to go. They were fixing to do this and do that, and they got the land use change, and there hasn't been a thing happen out there. So I have some concerns that you get a land use change, and then you go in there and you do something that would have an adverse effect, but still be within the change. But I kind of agree. We'd like, I'd like to see what is the planned development for that before we go making the land use change.
Can we do that?
Well, this is the land use change stage. You can either grant or deny the land use change at this point, and that's completely within your discretion.
But what they, once the, if the land use change is passed, what they do with it will have to be brought back to us at a later date.
Oh, yes, ma'am.
It'll have to, it will be brought back to us.
It'd be a development request.
Yeah. All right, any other comments from the board? All right? What do you wish to do?
Guess I'll put my money where my mouth is. Motion to deny.
All right, we have a motion to deny. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to deny. All those in favor?
Aye.
I'll say no.
No.
Okay, a motion passes. All right.
What was it?
Motion to deny.
Motion to deny passes.
Okay.
Next, we have Southland Utilities.
Yes, Commissioner, next item is another small-scale amendment. This is Southland Utilities. Again, I'll ask Ms. Christine Semen to come up and brief the board on this application as well.
Once again, good afternoon, commissioners. This is a small-scale amendment from Southland Utility Services on approximately 8.4 acres from urban residential to industrial. The project is located south of Oakwood Lakes Boulevard and west of U.S. Highway 331 North. It did go before the planning commission, and the planning commission did ask that it move forward. And we do have representatives today from Southland, and I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Does anyone have any questions? Of Christine? Anyone from Southland? Mike Morris, for example? Glad to have you with us, sir.
Good morning. I'm Jeff McKinnis. I'm the attorney for Southland. I have been sworn in. McKinnis is M-C-I-N-N-I-S. Thank you for hearing our request today. Southland Utilities has this parcel, these parcels under contract to purchase. The goal is to build a new corporate headquarters for Southland, and to the rear of the headquarters building would be what we would call a lay-down yard, where we will park trucks and equipment and store materials and supplies. This property would then let Southland be located adjacent to the Chelco Operations Center, which is across Oakwood Lakes Boulevard currently. There's a twenty-acre site there that has that operations center on it. Chelco has recently completed the acquisition of the other lots facing Oakwood Lakes Boulevard. The county has already rezoned four of those lots to industrial, and that's how the other twenty acres of Chelco is zoned, is industrial. So this would be consistent with that. The, some of the comments we had heard were concerned about noise, and I just wanted to confirm, this is not going to be some type of a factory operation. This is going to be a corporate headquarters, and it will have the trucks and equipment for Southland. They will go out in the morning to their jobs, and then primarily all return late in the afternoon. So we don't anticipate creating any type of noise problems, and of course, we will meet all of your codes and standards in the building and development of this property.
Any questions of the applicant?
Curiosity question. You're Chelco, but it's, that's a Gulf Power area. Who's going to provide the electricity?
I don't have that answer.
I have a question. The ring road that's internal to the subdivision, I notice your property abuts that road.
Yes, ma'am.
Would you be using that as an access for your trucks and equipment?
The primary access for the corporate headquarters will come off of 331. The primary access for the storage and parking areas will come off of Oakwood Lakes Boulevard. We would like to preserve the ability to have a gate along that other area, just in the event we needed to access the property from there. That would not be a main entrance or exit to the operations.
Okay, so you would have, you would have the ability to go out on that road?
Yes, ma'am.
Commerce circle, yeah, commerce circle, okay. And then what about the visual, what about the visual to the neighbors as to trucks and materials parked next to the residential properties? Would there be any fencing or landscaping or?
There would be both. We, we will have to install fencing, certainly for security purposes, to protect the equipment and the trucks, and we would like to be able to work with county staff at the time of planning and plan approval to deal with buffering or any type of privacy in that fencing. We're concerned right now committing to what type of fence it would be, because security is going to be a big issue for us just to protect the equipment there. But we certainly are willing to work with your staff at the time the plans are approved to achieve both buffering and some privacy for the surrounding properties.
Okay, so the fencing is usually what, a barbed wire fence? Is it usually barbed wire?
Chain link.
Chain link, I mean, I'm sorry.
Typically chain, chain link, yes, ma'am.
Okay, chain, yeah, okay.
I'm sorry.
Go ahead, I'm sorry, that's it, that's all.
Do you anticipate coming out from the west side onto Commerce for any particular reason?
Only just for additional access, but we don't anticipate that being a daily used access point. We would like to be able to get to the back of the acreage there, but as I said, the, the equipment, primary entrances would be on Oakwood, and then the corporate headquarters' primary entrance would face 331. So there would be driveways put in both of those places there.
All right, any other questions, ladies and gentlemen? Thank you, sir.
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
Any other questions? Anyone in the audience like to speak to this issue? Seeing none, what's your?
Well, I do have another question. Where, where are the gopher tortoises going to be relocated to?
What about?
Whose district does this in?
Mine.
Yeah. Would they be taken to the Waihewa Center?
To Bill's house?
They're, we are working right-
It's about four hundred yards from my house. He could just move into my backyard.
Oh, okay.
We are working right now on developing the plan for the removal, and I think the, one of the options is the Nikosi Plantation Area. And yes, those were discovered in the environmental report, and we know that has to be taken care of.
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion in a second. Is there any other discussion among the board? Seeing none?
I'd like to add an amendment to that, if you will accept it.
Hang on a second. Did we take public comment?
We didn't take public comment.
But just ask, was there any comment?
I just asked for it.
Oh, I'm sorry. I missed it, okay, my bad.
I would just like to add an amendment that, that there be no access off onto Commerce Drive except in case of emergency, and that there be landscape screening adjacent the residential properties. That would buffer, that would buffer the-
Did you understand what she said?
Yes, ma'am. I understand that the, the restriction on Commerce would be for emergencies only, which we're fine with that, and we certainly have no problem working with landscape screening and buffering in the design.
For the adjacent, yeah.
Okay, will you amend your-
I'll amend my motion to include that.
All right, will you amend your second?
Yes.
All right, we, we do that? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Commissioners, next item on our agenda is the Spyglass Hill Two plat. This is a application to plat five lots, residential lots on 2.51 acres, for the future land use of Low Density Residential. We have Tim Brown here from our staff, if you have any questions.
Anyone have any questions?
Yeah, on the staff comment, you've got Commission District, you've got it in District One. Chapman's district, so you can have it if you want it, Mr. Chapman, but it's in District Five.
I don't, we'll leave it with you.
Okay, thank you. Just, just as a matter of correction.
Thank you, Commissioner, we'll get that corrected.
And this is low-density residential, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
And this is exactly catty-corner to the other one that we just heard, correct?
I believe so, yes, ma'am.
Okay, all right. And when was this land use change to low-density residential?
That I don't know. Tim, do you know that answer?
I'm just curious as to-
No, I'm sorry, it's not in the staff report, but I believe it was last year.
Yeah, I think I recall it coming forward. Now, are they gonna, are they gonna pave Seacroft? Is that part of this?
No, they're extending Dino Drive three hundred feet. They're paving it, but, but not, not Seacroft.
Really?
Yes.
Okay. Why wouldn't they be accessing off of Seacroft?
They're saying their primary access is Dino. Even though you can access this property from Seacroft, they're saying there, it's going to be access from North Dino.
Okay, I, I think they ought to have to pave Seacroft, because that, we're looking for that connection in there, and instead of going down Luvva and going up through all of those other people's yards, why, why don't they just connect Seacroft? I thought that was a condition of approval for a piece on Seacroft. I thought that was something that we were going to see happen.
Well, before the Great Recession, there was three properties, three different projects along Seacroft that were approved.
Right, right.
And, and the condition from the commission at the time was that they band together and paved Seacroft.
Yeah.
But they, they all went bankrupt. They were never built. They were never, they never went forward, but, but that did require them to-
Pave Seacroft.
-pave almost the whole, that whole part of Seacroft, yes.
Yeah, I think, I think they've got a higher density. We gave them a higher density. I think they ought to pave that section of Seacroft to enable the, a connection to happen there for the parcels to the east, because they're the next piece in line. Another question is, is there a recreation plat fee on this? I didn't see one.
Yes, it's, they paid it already.
Oh, they did?
It's $12,757.50.
Okay, okay.
Oh. I got a question quickly. Earlier in the meeting, we accepted maintenance on South Dino. Is North Dino county-maintained?
I do, I do not know. They, we are giving them a credit on their proportion of fair share for paving it, because Spyglass One got a credit, because they paved Dino, and now Spyglass Two is getting a credit because they're paving Dino, but I don't know if it's county-maintained or not, because it was a dirt road.
If, if it's not county-maintained, do they still automatically have a right to, to use it, to get to their-
Well, they are dedicating, I, it's a, it's a 66-foot easement as what it is, and they have 33 feet. They're dedicating their 33 feet as right-of-way. So it's going to go from an easement to right-of-way under this plat, and I believe they did the same thing for Phase 1, Spyglass Hill 1. But the plat clearly shows it's an easement, and they're dedicating that as right-of-way.
And they're connecting to Seacraft, but they're not going to pave Seacraft?
Yes, correct. It is at the corner of Dino and Seacraft.
Yeah, see, I, I think, I think the county ought to require them to pave Seacraft, because otherwise, the county's going to have to do it. So they're using it, they're, they've got an increase in density. I think that ought to be a requirement. Because we're, if not, we're, we're going to have to do it. And I think the developer needs to pay their way, and not put it off on the taxpayers, but-
They got a credit on their proportionate fair share for, for extending the road.
Yeah, I'm sure they did, but, you know, it was probably not enough to pave the road. And I noticed, too, that all the drainage is going in the, looks like, the drainage looks like it's going out in the, in the Dino Drive easement. Is that, is that correct? Am I correct in that?
No, they're, they're swales. It's a swell along the front of the property line there. It's kind of hard to tell from this drawing. It's, it's on their property, but-
Is it?
Both in the front, the side, and in the rear.
Yeah.
They're all swales.
But there's a little thing that, if, if their property line is the heavy line, the heavy black line, then to the, to the right of that, or to the east of that, there are some little, what look like drainage structures. And they've got elevations on them, 36, 37. So those are swales. So those are in, what it looks like to me, in the public right-of-way. Is that-
You're going to have to ask the applicant that, Commissioner, I'm, I'm not sure. I, I thought they were on private property, but the applicant would know better than I.
Okay, yeah, it, it looks like it, I, you know, it just looks like it to me, but that, that's a question I have.
Do you have the answer?
Commissioner, if I could respond to that, Matt Carpenter for the Planning Department. There are two sets of swales. There are some that serve the lots, that are actually on the lots, and then there's a set that are in between the driveways-
Uh-huh.
...that provide for stormwater for Dino Drive, which is in the public easement.
Okay.
So they're not using the public easement for their private lot stormwater.
Okay, they're using it to storm the water on Dino, store the water on Dino?
Yes, ma'am, it's separated.
Okay. And then, are the drainage easements platted in the lots?
It's part of the, the 66-foot government-patent easement. And those swales that are shown within that easement serve the roadway only.
Right. But the other, the other drainage easements that run down 15-foot in between every lot, and then on the rear of the lot, or those, those are in, on the lot?
They're on lot, and they serve the lot stormwater requirement.
Okay. And then what's on the, what's on the rear? What's that, what's that on the rear? It says 10-foot landscape buffer, and then there's a line, and then there's nothing. What is that?
Uh...
And the lot lines don't extend over it. Where does it say that? It's a private, so is that a private alley?
Yes, it's a private alley.
And it's going to connect out onto Seacraft?
Yes.
Okay, so, once again, I think Seacraft ought to be paved by the developer of this property.
Rear access to those lots.
Yeah, yeah, I, I'm sure it is. Yeah, that's what alleys serve, you know.
There were, Commissioner, just, if I could, there were three developments approved by the BCC back in the '06 timeframe-
Yeah.
...that were further to the east along Seacraft Drive, that had the condition to pave Seacraft Drive.
Right.
Two of them were across the street from one other, and the other one was adjacent. But those lots were still undeveloped, and they're, they will come at some point.
But they still have that requirement-
Yes, ma'am.
...of paving. So what we'll have is a section of Seacraft that's unpaved, if these guys don't pave it?
Well, the requirement on those three projects that you're referring to-
Was to pave the whole thing?
...require pave from their, their locations all the way out to 393.
Okay, well-
And these are not those projects.
Okay, right, but that's not quite fair, I don't think, for, to put the burden on everybody to the east to pave. Now, does, does the alleyway go any further, or does it just serve these lots?
I believe it terminates on, at the back of those lots.
Okay, so these lots have access on an alleyway to the rear, and on Dino, and on Dino?
Oh, Seacraft.
And, and on, Seacraft, yeah. The alleyway has access on Seacraft. The houses have access on Dino, which has access on Seacraft, okay.
And we have, we have paved roadway serving all of the lots, all the way back out to 393, down Dino South to Luva Lane.
Right. Now, I, I understand that, but it doesn't make sense to me to go through a bunch of other people's, other, other roads, when you've got an access off Seacraft, that, it doesn't make sense to me. It's not, I think it's not a good use of the public's money, but-
Okay. For the record, Mr. Carpenter, you have been sworn.
Yes, ma'am, I have been.
Thank you.
I'm sorry.
That's all right. Any other questions of staff? Would the applicant like to come forward? Have an applicant? Apparently not.
Doesn't look like we have an applicant.
Um, yeah, where's the applicant? Not here? All right, yes, sir. We'll take public comment at this time. Are you the applicant, sir?
Yeah.
If you will come forward, please? If you'll state your name for the record, spell your last name, and have you been sworn?
William Abbott, A.B.B.O.T.T., and-
Have you been sworn?
I have not been sworn yet.
Oh, okay.
Mr. Abbott, do you solemnly swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give before this board will be the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
All right. Is any light you'd like to shed on this?
Well, we, we had the zoning changed on this site, and we like low density, so we decided to build five lots instead of eight. And we went through the whole process. We've been working about a year and a half on this. We were made aware of the paving requirements by the other three lots. Never came up in any discussions with us that we'd have any reason to pave Seacraft. The houses and the lots are all laid out in a big fashion. They're 60 by 268 feet deep. We never had any idea about your thoughts about paving Seacraft. We know it's going to come. There are some very big issues with right-of-ways on Seacraft that have not been resolved. We did talk to the Public Works Department some time ago, and they have not solved them, but we assume in the future they will. The actual road that's been used as Seacraft is actually inside of our property totally, and we gave up that easement to the county.
I believe Commissioner Meadows, you might ask him if he's willing to pave that portion?
Yeah, I guess the, the question would be, let me get back to it, but, yeah, the question would be, since, since it was a condition of the DO for the property, all the properties to the east, I think it only fair that it be a condition of this development, and I'm not aware of the issues with the right-of-way. Can, is there anybody here from Public Works that could describe those? Is, are they, because it looks, let's see, it looks to me like on the plat that it shows that there is enough right-of-way in there, but I could be-
Well, the road Seacraft in front of our property to the north-
Yeah.
...is entirely on our property.
Well, this map, though, shows it as your plat, or the lots layout show, they show Seacraft Road public to the north of your property, and it doesn't look like it's on your property. Now, the, the way people are using it could possibly be on your property, because that does happen all over the place, where, you know, the actual road, the actual roadway is on people's property, but this doesn't show it. But I, I would like to just say, see that, that should this be doable, to get a pavement in there, is, is that be a condition of approval of this development, is that they pave their portion of Seacraft?
This is Kermit George. He is my surveyor, and I just wanted him to attest that Seacraft is totally on our property.
Mr. George, were you sworn earlier?
Kermit George.
Mr. George, were you sworn earlier?
I was, I did. I was, I did. Kermit George, Seaside Engineering and Surveying, 114 East Cedar Avenue, Cresview, Florida.
Is it like George Washington, G.E.O.R.G.E.?
O.R.G.E., that's right.
Thank you, sir.
Kermit like the frog.
Mr. Kermit, this, this survey here, and it's, and it's sheet CO2, shows the property boundaries, and then to the north of it is a 33-foot roadway and utility easement, which does not seem to encroach on your boundary line here, as shown on the plan. Is that, is that the case, or?
I would have to look at it.
Okay.
I don't think I can look at here.
Yeah, here, here it is. Yeah, it shows a 33-foot easement on the, on there.
I didn't do the engineer.
Existing conditions.
What's he talking about here?
We've got 16-foot wide plate, isn't that part of the lot?
Yeah, but you could put a, you, you could put some, a road in there. I mean, you know, you, you could, you could fit a road with, I'm just saying that, I'm just saying if it doesn't get done now, it's going to be one of those things that-
This, this lot, when we bought it-
It was part of the lot, start with it.
...was five parcels. One parcel that we had titled to was the 33-foot easement to the north and to the east. Then the other part of the property, the big square, was four separate parcels. We had five separate parcels. So we have dedicated the, the fifth parcel to the county and paved that one part of it, but we had no requirement to pave Seacraft.
Okay, so you're talking about to the east, right, correct?
The east and the north.
You're talking about the east. The north shows Seacraft Road as being public, a public 33-foot roadway and utility easement. Is, did y'all give that to the county, or sell it to the county?
It was a parcel number. We actually had a parcel number on both of those sections, the north section and the-
Okay. So you've dedicated that to the county?
Yes, we've given it to the county, yeah.
That 33-foot, okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Okay. All right, so there is 33-foot easement there. My comment is just that, you know, they pave it now, or we pave it later, and we use taxpayer money, and I just think that it, you know, taxpayers should not be required to pay for paving these roads that are going to be used by this development primarily. I mean, people are going to come in Seacraft, because they're going to have an alleyway to the back of their houses. That's what they're going to use. I, I, you know, I, I think that the county's got to step up and start asking for some of these things to be done, instead of looking for the taxpayer to pay for them.
Okay. All right, thank you. Thank you. Now, is anyone in the audience like to speak to this issue?
Mr. Chairman, may I ask a question? Don't go away. May Mac, you can answer.
Yes, sir.
On, on the cover page, they talk about there are five parcels, oh, oh, 70, oh, 71, 72, 73, 74. But when we get over to CO2 for the plat, I only see four of those parcels identified. Where is oh, seven, zero?
Um, I am familiar that there were five parcels, and one of them is just the easement, and it's an L-shaped parcel, which is the northeastment and the Dino Drive.
Is that oh, seven, oh?
Yes.
Yes, it's like it, yeah.
Yes, sir. Yeah, and, and then, so why give, if you don't want to access on Seacraft, why give Seacraft, why give the right-of-way there? Obviously, it's going to be used by-
That's it.
-those five lots, as their alleyway. I mean-
Okay.
Again, is there anyone in the audience like to speak to this issue? Seeing none, ladies and gentlemen? What is your pleasure?
I would make a motion that we approve, but we require them to pave that portion of Seacraft, which is adjacent to their, connected up with, with Dino. And, and that would, that would allow another access way out for all those people on Dino South, and if anything should ever happen, it connects that. And I think that's, as part of public safety, health, safety, and welfare, I think that that would be a positive thing.
We have a motion. Do we have a second? I see. Are you studying, or just, he's, okay. So we'll give him a minute to cipher, okay?
Commissioners, I, I've just, sitting here, realized, this is a plat approval. The development order's already been issued. I don't know that we can add conditions, yeah. I don't know that we can add conditions to a plat. I just, I'm sorry, I was, I just realized, it's, it's an actual plat approval, not a development order approval.
Yeah, if it's a plat, then our opportunity has been missed, and-
Yes, ma'am.
-I, I would, I would direct staff and Public Works to look at these things a little bit closer, because these are the things that are going to haunt us later on.
Yeah, it, it is actually just a plat approval.
All right. So do you amend your motion?
Okay, my motion is to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Being no further discussion, everyone in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Ma'am Chairman, the next item on our agenda is the Casablanca major development order. I'll ask Mac to come up and present this particular project.
Thank you, Commissioners. This is a proposed 14-unit condo on three existing lots totaling 1.6 acres, with the future land use of both neighborhood infill and village mixed use. Located directly across from the Laura Hamilton Boulevard intersection with County Road 30A. It's on the south side of County Road 30A. We believe it meets the, the conditions of the Comprehensive Plan and Land Development Code. We do have some conditions to offer to help ensure that. We've got a couple of details that, that we just need to confirm. One of those is the final location of multi-use path and the crosswalk between the multi-use path and the north side of County Road 30A there at Gulf Place. The applicant is working with Public Works to finalize that final arrangement, and it is off-site, within the county right-of-way. We've added a condition for that. And one additional requirement, we need some additional information in the environmental assessment to confirm whether or not the intact beach dune vegetation actually exists on the south side. All of this is within the coastal construction control line portion of the project, as is all of the, the work that is being done. South of the coastal construction control line would be subject to DEP permitting, which is in process, but has not yet been obtained. And that would also be a condition of the approvals, if this board chooses to approve the project.
Is it also in the Beach Mouse area?
This is in the Beach Mouse area, so they have that requirement to, to meet also.
And, and Mac, just for clarification, there was a proposed final order in your packet. We've actually added the CR 30A right-of-way requirements, so I have amended one, just so you, just so you know, there's-
This is not it.
I have amended-
What would that, what would that say?
Commissioner, that they, they work with Public-
I have an individual sheet that has item E and F. Those are two additional conditions that you should have already been passed out at the table this morning. They're not in the book, they're separate.
Okay, I, okay, I see, I see. What about, is there any recreation impact fee for this, for this project?
Proportionate fair share, $43,150.
Recreation, no recreation plat fee?
Recreation fee at this time. This is not a plat that we approve.
Okay, so it's a condo, and they don't have-
Condo.
-they don't have recreation plat fees?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, okay.
You said there was an additional page-
Yeah, there, there's a single sheet that has item E and F on it, that was passed out, separate from your book, earlier.
I was left out. She didn't have it either? She didn't have it either? Thank you, sir. No, we have the final order.
It's E and F on it.
Oh, okay, well, that, okay. You said single sheet, this is too vague.
Yeah.
And they would be subject to the wildlife lighting?
Yes, ma'am. No exterior lighting is being proposed at this time, but that is also one of the requirements in the staff report that any, and it's also on the plan in a note that any lighting would have to comply with our wildlife lighting ordinance.
Very good. Any other questions of staff? Would the applicant like to come forward?
Good morning, members of the board. My name is Dean Burgess, B-U-R-G-I-S. I have been sworn. I'm the engineer of record and agent to the applicant for the Costa Blanca condominium. I think staff did a good job of introducing it. It is within the village mixed use and infill. It's an assembly of three parcels. The land use categories are primarily village mixed use and one small, the smaller parcel is infill. We've got an allowable density of up to nineteen units. We're proposing to do fourteen. We do have overflow parking. We have a surface parking lot and then a parking lot underneath the building itself. And I believe if I recall correctly, we have six overflow spaces in addition to what the code requires. We have read the staff report and have read the conditions and we understand and accept them as written and proposed. I'd be happy to answer any questions the board may have.
This is near Edwaleen?
Yes, it's west of Edwaleen, so basically right across from Golf Place. Immediately south of Golf Place.
Dean, you said you had underground parking?
Yes, sir.
Wasn't there somewhere right close to here that it got blown out during the last heavy stuff?
Yes, to the, further to the west of this and we're, we're very sensitive to that. We had long conversations between the architect, owner and myself to make sure that we aren't one of those victims. And I'm, I'm comfortable that our drainage design will, will keep that from happening to us.
Okay, I, I understand you probably got your drainage design to accommodate a lot of that, but when you got all that water coming off from the north that crossed 30A and blew everything out underneath those other couple of houses to the west of there.
Right.
I'd assume you're taking measures to prevent that?
Yeah, I'm very familiar with, with what happened. It was basically a, an armoring wall that blew out, the hydrostatic pressure blew out the, the armoring wall and basically liquefied the sand beneath it.
Okay.
Any other questions of the applicant?
Thank you.
All right, is there any public comment at this time? Seeing none? Ladies and gentlemen, what is your pleasure? Motion to approve. We have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second, if, if, with the conditions that are set forth by the staff.
With the conditions, all right. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
Ma'am Chairman, last item on our agenda is the Treasure Trove Phase One plat for eleven lots. Single family, I'll ask Bob Baranti from our staff to present this case to the board.
Good afternoon. This parcel is roughly five point three zero acres. It runs, it is south of Los Robles Grande Drive. There will be eleven plotted acres, which, or plotted lots, which will make up Phase One of Treasure Trove. It has a cash bond for the sidewalk that'll run parallel to the homes and, and the road already deposited to cover the amount plus the ten percent. The recreation fee buyout letter has already been sent out to the applicant. Will be collected before the plat is recorded. And I will, and it, and the, the land use is currently residential preservation and you have one public comment letter in your packet if you have any questions. And the representative is here to answer any questions.
All right, do we have any questions of staff? Nope, do we have any questions of the applicant? Do we have anybody in the audience that would like to speak to this issue? Yes, sir. Please come forward, state your name, spell your last name and let us know if you've been sworn.
I have been sworn. My name is David Hutchins, H-U-T-C-H-I-N-S. I'm the spokesman for the Community Preservation Association, which is members of Casa Grande Lane. And since we were here, the homeowners association of Forest Park, which joins that property, asked me to speak on their behalf. We have no objection to this property. However, a lot of a strong objection surrounds the current condition of that property. It is flooded. There was litigations filed on the flood of this property back in 2015. That issue, that flooding and everything has not been resolved, if you review it. And the other thing, Treasure Cove consisted of eleven houses at that time when this was proposed, nine years ago. Okay? Now, the development has piggybacked in a proposal of Phase Two and Three, which we're not talking about today. We're talking about Phase One. That's forty-one more houses. So we're concerned about the water runoff density, the Forest Park people and the other people in the area, because this is a low area flood zone. And it has a retention pond there, two, two retention ponds that litigation was filed because they were damaged by the Forest Park developers. That has not been resolved. So what I'm asking today and everything from the homeowners association that you tabled is so we can get an updated report on the flooding, what's going to be done about this low-lying retention ponds, et cetera, so that we don't have a problem with Forest Park or any of the homeowners in that area. Thank you, and let's all go to lunch.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak to this issue? Thank you, sir.
Good morning. My name is Darrell Burgess, B-U-R-G-I-S. I am the surveyor of record who has prepared the subdivision plat. This Phase One has a development order. The construction and infrastructure is complete, accepted and inspected by the county. This should be a matter of formality in terms of approving this plat. Thank you.
So Phase One is just the one through eleven lots? Is that what we're talking? Okay, and this is a final plat? Okay, so we, yeah.
Final plat.
So, yeah, okay.
Yes, ma'am, this is just Phase One. These are the eleven lots that run parallel to the road. Phase Two and Three is working its way through the development order process.
Okay.
And it is north of this.
Right, okay. Yeah, and I did notice, I did notice a large amount of flood zone property here. Did they apply for a LOMA, a floodplain map amendment for the balance? Which is really not part of the discussion, but just curious. No?
No, ma'am, there's no, no LOMA, LOMA has been applied for, granted.
Okay, thank you.
But just for your information, there is a large preservation area that you will see in the future for lot, for parcel, for Phase Two and Three.
Two and Three, okay. Are they coming in with Two and Three together as one development? Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
So it's in the process with now, right?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
All right, Mr. Thomas, did you want to speak?
Is Los Robles Grande Drive, is that paved right now?
Yes, ma'am.
It is.
Yes, it is.
It is, okay, okay. Okay.
Would you come to the microphone, Mr. Thomas?
Usually you can hear me without it. Yeah, I, I went ahead and deeded the road to the county as part of the initial development order. We are not touching any wetlands. I walked the property with DEP and Army Corps of Engineers. We're not encroaching on any wetlands. And we're going to wind up with the largest lots on the north side of Highway 98 that have been platted in a while, according to Mr. Burgess from Emerald Coast. We went ahead and spent over sixty grand on a pond, a DEP pond. And what happened is the subdivision, and I, I joined all of you, if you'll remember, at one point with a lawsuit a few years ago because I wanted to get your attention and have you sit down and, and meet with us. And Mr. Davis advised me that I would have a large fee if I didn't dismiss the suit. So I, I follow his very capable representation. But what I was concerned about with Mark is that this county doesn't do anything to ensure the specifications of the, the development orders are followed. And Mr. Davis says, we just don't have the, the staff, we don't want the liability, et cetera. I sued Forest Park because they had a dry retaining pond that, when it was approved initially, according to the information from the engineers that worked for me, they went and they, they did their bore samples after there had been almost two months of dry weather and they got an unreasonably low aggregate water mean line and they used that as the basis for saying that's the average water mean.
I'm sorry, where is Forest Park?
Forest Park is just to the south of, of Phase One.
Okay, okay.
And then they said that the sand there would percolate four times faster than the aluminum silicate of the beach sand, which we all know that's impossible. So what happened is Forest Park didn't follow through with the developer's agreement with you guys where they're supposed to maintain their dry pond. They weren't even paying money for, for any of that type of activity. I saw that there wasn't going to be a chance to talk to you guys about this. Forest Park didn't want to get with me and try to figure out what we should do, so the whole thing was just tabled. That happened one time and it was after a very severe rain that I think most of y'all remember about a year or two ago. But this property is set up, so there's going to be two lots per acre. There's going to be a giant wetland area in the middle and people's houses are going to be facing to the wetlands. It's going to be one of the nicest areas that's been built down there. And for the record, this property has been in my family. My mom has had an interest in it since 1972, I believe. So we pretty much have been working on it since 2008. I have personally cleared the land. I have both emotionally, financially and physically gone to the point of exhaustion with this. So you guys approve this and let's get you some more tax money into the coffers.
Mr. Thomas, let me ask you one question. Is Lot 12 in Phase One as well?
It's not. It was supposed to be included, but it'll be in Phase Two.
Okay, it's up there on Casa Grande Lane. And all those roads around there, are they all paved?
The road that's in front of Phase One is paved, but Casa Grande hasn't been paved.
But it's on the list, I think. Is it, it's, I think it's on the list.
I had worked with Ms. Jones before. She had done a great job and she was able to get that, that grading put out there for us, the.
Right.
Yes, thank you. That was great work.
I think, I think that.
I think even Mr. Hutchinson, who was here objecting earlier, proved that it went in front of his house also.
I think those roads are, are on the list of, they're coming up next.
Problem was, they're not wide enough. You don't have thirty-three feet, so there might have to be a creative way of doing that, but I'm sure this group can find a creative way to handle that.
Yeah, I'm sure we can find a way, yeah.
We can come up with.
Okay.
That's all I have unless you.
Is there anyone else? Because we've allowed it, okay. Ladies and gentlemen?
For, for the record, we do have DO inspectors now, so.
Yes, we do have.
We do have DO inspectors. Do, do they make anybody do anything, though?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
All right, ladies and gentlemen, I need a motion or?
Did you ask for people in the audience?
I did. I've asked twice, as a matter of fact.
I did get a, I did get a letter from someone and I think it's been entered into the record, so.
I've asked twice already. What is your pleasure, ladies and gentlemen?
Motion to approve.
Second.
With the staff's conditions.
Second, with staff's conditions. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
No, ma'am.
All right, and if we will ask everyone to exit the room, we do have an executive session.